Hello, I'm going to open this regular meeting of the Blue Lake City Council to order. It's Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we have an establishment of the quorum, please?
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mayor President.
Present.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Here.
Okay, we have one member absent. And we'll move on to approval of the agenda. First at council, is there anyone that would like to move anything around or see the need to change anything from the agenda as delivered? Nothing here. Okay, and open to public, anyone from the public here for something specific? Okay, we'll move back to the council for a motion and a vote. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Christopher Edgar to approve the agenda as delivered. And note that councilperson Elise Gaffoni just came in. Is there any further discussion about the agenda? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Item three is our public comment time. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Kent Sawatsky.
So during the recent flood we had, or it must be about a month ago now, it was asserted that the city wasn't notified as far as weather conditions. I have copies of those, don't unfortunately have them with me, to show that it was a standard process where everybody was notified. I also reached out to the tribe, our ranch, our partners, they were notified. And I also got the notification of this upcoming storm. So I'm on the list now as far as being notified, so.
Mr. Sawatsky, I apologize for interrupting. Isn't this agenda item six? The flood?
No, I'm, I'm, you can apologize, I'm speaking about, about the OES service with the Humboldt County and history, about that particular topic, the OES has been on there. Um, so anyway, I, I do have those things coming now, and I'm sure you can get on the list if you are interested in getting on the list to be informed as far as this upcoming weather situation which we're going into. I strongly suggest that we all do that. I also have a, a public records request, which I will be giving to Honley here because I possibly has not received it. I'm going to read it to you, okay, so you have it. This is in reply to a letter I got from the city attorney, Ryan Plotz. And, uh, what's the noise, is that time up or something? But, uh, basically a public records request. Mr. Plotz, regarding the assertion that I made certain statements during public comment that constitute threats towards city employees, is a form PIA request for the city may, any record the city may have regarding this said assertion, including not limited notes taken staff communication, commission communication, the statements that have been reported to the Humboldt County Sheriff, including any post, post reporting communication. Allegedly, you folks were sent a CC of the letter that was sent from me. The letter I got from the attorney was not, uh, delivered special, just regular post, and it said you all were CC'd with the complaint that, including the city manager, the city clerk, and the city council, so you should be aware of that particular top. And so I'm going to, at this time, it's, I'm not sure, I have no indication that my request to have this forward to the city has been forward, so I'm just going to go ahead and drop it off right now, so. Always appreciate, when Honley does respond promptly, you have a very good city clerk, she takes care of her due diligence on PIA requests, and it's something the public values greatly, thank you.
Okay, I see someone on Zoom. Julie Christie.
Are you guys able to hear me up here tonight?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you guys for Zoom, Justin, if you remember, thank you for being recording for us. Uh, I just put in this request, it turns that commission could also be offered the opportunity of Zooming. We have a beautiful, distinctive evening on our household, and that's great. It allows a lot more public access to being involved, and it also allows reporting opportunities for archiving our nation meetings. I'm really happy that the commission is allowing some participation in their commission, but I would probably, again, like to help part from our council and staff to try and work into that. I know still have a little bit of COVID funds that we're going to be, at one point, distributed towards that direction or towards helping Justin, so either or, much appreciated, and thank you, everybody.
Okay, no other hands up on Zoom, no one from the audience, great. So we'll move on to item four. Blue Lake Commissioner Application Review and Appointments. The city has received applications from the following applicants for appointments to various city commissions. The following applicants are existing commissioners whose terms have expired and who are requesting reappointment. And we have their applications in our packets. For the Economic Development Committee Commission, we have Cindy Trobets Thomas and Kelly Costa. For Public Safety Commission, we have Kim Warvree and Stephanie Dickinson. And for Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Bettina Piper. And again, it's always wonderful to have these qualified people step forward again and to continue the good work that they do on those commissions. Are there any questions or comments from? Didn't we already appoint Kim Warvree? That's what I'm wondering.
She took over a person who left.
That's right, that's right. She was in the middle of a term, and it was a short term, so.
That's right, that's right. That's right.
These things happen.
Good, my mistake.
I would like to move that we appoint.
I was going to open it up to the public before we make a motion. Um, is there any comment from public concerning these commissions and commissioners? The mayor recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
I did want to thank the people for reapplying, it's always hard to get people, and we're lucky to have these people participating in this. We don't want to lose the ones we have. I did have, have something on, on certain qualifications on some of these committees that I've run into. There is a necessity of a person or a certain percentage of these people actually being residents of Blue Lake, and I think that varies, it'd really be nice to get clarity on that, so how many residents are required in your, in your, in your application, of course, you do have, have the right to go ahead and delete certain information about the person. But here it says, one of them, I'm just looking at one of them here, length of time in Blue Lake, 18 years managing family property. That person lives in the Fieldbrook area. And so it's, it's hard to tell whether somebody's qualified. And the other one in here, I know another person, another great person in here, I mentioned that they've been in around the area for a length of time in Blue Lake, 38 years. And I, that one sounds like it's probably in Blue Lake, on the other one here, there's a person who it says length of time in Blake, 65 plus years, and I don't believe that person actually resides within the city limits. So I'm just, I'm just saying maybe that question needs to be clarified as far as length of time residing in Blue Lake itself or something, so that we can tell, or else, or else don't, don't redact the other parts, show their address, so we do know they live in this city, that's just a question. That's something I think you're going to need to follow up on some of your thing, you may wish to have your staff address that to make sure what the criteria are, what your ratios are. And then again, I've mentioned before, you did downsize your arts and heritage. You have four, four vacancies coming at the same time, and one position's vacant. So it'd be really good to go ahead and declare that one to be the vacant one to be in sequence, so you have two and three, rather than having four coming all do at one time. I think that's a process we've tried to have before. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thanks for the people who are killing to serve.
And I see on Zoom, Julie? Yeah.
If I, if this is, uh, now that I'm beginning to reapply, uh, find, uh, it's good that this is in, I know, part one of the election, and there would be, yeah, certainly, I think that we're ready to have that in the whole, aye? That I call, and look, it's supposed to be, after your bow, I start again, to move on, is there? So that I, so I have a conclusion, uh, doesn't consider it, will be involved. But just giving, either it's there, do you have some stand, and if you're looking to bow? I think, but we're trying to, I think a lot of us do it, so definitely, and start being involved, thank you.
Okay, any other, yeah, any other comments from public back to council? You know, Mandy, I, I think that's an interesting idea that this length of time living, and, well, one says living and working in Blue Lake, the other says living, and I know, you know, for instance, Cindy Trobets Thomas has not lived in the city of Blue Lake.
Here, though?
Uh huh. So maybe it should say length of time in Blue Lake area or something like that, I mean.
And I'm sure Kelly Costa as well, right?
Also, um, like, too.
Okay.
Yeah. There are different factors for.
Yeah.
We've talked about before, is, if there is a, a resident who is as qualified as another commissioner, we'd vote the resident in rather than the other person.
Right.
We've talked about that.
Right.
And so, but if they live in the sphere of influence, like she was saying, I think it's, and nobody else is coming in, is, I don't think it hurts anything.
Yeah, it's just that the, the actual wording, length of time in Blue Lake. It did mean in the city of Blue Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree that we should give priority to folks that live in Blue Lake, but this is misleading, I think, for some people. But, you know, this happens often when people say, oh, I live in Blue Lake, and then you find out, oh, I live over by Murphy's Market or something like that, you know, technically you don't live in Blue Lake, so it's used very fluidly. Anyway, it might be something to look at in the future so we can really have a more accurate application.
Well, I, I agree that we probably should do that. Because I, I understand what Chris is saying, but that kind of doesn't apply when we have people coming on the commission at different times. If we have, like, everybody applying at the same time, then we would give preference to the resident. But what may happen, if we have one person coming at a time, we might have a commission that's just about full of people that don't actually live within the city limits. And then, you know, so then we, we don't have that opportunity to balance. So, and I noticed there are two different formatted applications here, and they say different things, so we should probably be sure that what's on the website that people can print out and what we're handing people are the very same application, so we have the same information from everyone. And as Adeline was saying, have a situation, you know, have a question that says, do you live within the city limits, yes or no? And then, do you work within the city limits, yes or no, and then how long? That way we know exactly, and the public knows exactly what we're looking at.
I agree.
That makes sense.
And then there is that, that question on the, um, the expiration of term for the arts and heritage commissioners. And so what, what Kent mentioned is true. I think it said, so there's four people, you know, terming out at the same time and one person terming out at a different year. And that is partially the result of how the website was updated. When, um, I think like, how it happened that we had spots filled and then we removed two spots when it, when it went from a seven to a five-year, or a five-member commission. So one of those terms that expires is probably not supposed to. I have to look at it to see who's who, but I, but I think, like, you know, we could probably change one of those dates so that, so that, because it's, it could be an error, so that we, we don't actually have four terming out at the same time, we have three terming out at that date and two more at the other.
Okay, we'll look at that, that's good. We'll have staff look at the arts and heritage commission and see how we're doing on those commissioners. Okay, um, back to the issue at hand, we need a motion and a second to approve this slate of commissioners.
I would make a motion that we approve all the applicants.
Second. Motion made by Elise Gaffoni, seconded by Elizabeth McKay. Any further discussion from council? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes, and again, thank you to those folks that have stepped up to work on our city issues. We are now on item five. Conduct the second reading and adopt by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake, adding section 6.04.035 to chapter 6.04 of Title VI of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to adopt dog leash regulations and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. Discussion and action items. So the city council directed staff to amend this chapter. So noted, as this item amends the city municipal code, it must be adopted through the ordinance adoption process. This requires a first and second reading prior to adoption at a regularly scheduled council meeting. The city council introduced and conducted, conducted the first reading of the ordinance at the January 23rd meeting. So this second reading and adoption is recommended to occur this evening. And again, this has to be a roll call vote, we need to know exactly who votes and who doesn't. So is there any questions or comments or discussion from council on this item? No? We've been working on it a long time, we finally got the legal terms that we needed to make it a real ordinance. Okay, I'll open it up for public input on this. Uh, the chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
I'm so glad to see this coming to fruition, I will reiterate what I did before. It's really nice to have a ordinance and something, and now we're left with enforcement. And I will reiterate, sometime of enforcement needs to be available, I mean, laws are great, but nobody is able or willing to enforce them. That gets to be a problem, I still will, will again, continue to lobby to have you quest staff to bring back current prices from the animal shelter, as far as having a regular patrol going through the area, which would be checking for licensing. And I think if you get enough dogs licensed through this particular effort, hopefully would pay for that, and we will all feel a lot safer knowing that we have actual people who are qualified and licensed and trained to handle dogs in these kind of situations. Just going up and down the street and just coming up upon a dog that's off-leash, running around town, it's something that most people would not be comfortable going with, trying to apprehend or deal with that dog unless you know the dog, and it's just good to have professionals out there, so I highly recommend going down that path, thank you.
Any other public comment on this? Julie? On Zoom?
Oh my God, this is making sense, but, um, one more time, I'm just gonna speak this, but, I think it's a little, if you guys, I mean, in town, it's kind of murky, we have areas of.
We're having trouble, we're having a little trouble hearing you, could you speak a little louder? Let me turn it up.
There's no.
A little.
Just fine, you guys, just give some time to town marking where it's, I said it a few times, I think we should get that in there, too. That's all, I support all of you, thank you.
Okay, back to council for any further discussion or clarification.
Make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fanona.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the leash law coming to fruition as well, it was a long process, a lot of talking, a lot of back and forth. And to the Public Safety Commission as well, because Phil and Stephanie, I think, kind of went above and beyond trying to help out. And Handsome just turned 18, and, you know, just thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to come back and, I'm going to go ahead and just read the amendment, so we're all clear about it. Item A says, "It shall be unlawful for any owner of or person in charge of or in control of any dog to suffer or permit a dog to be in the city unless such dog is securely enclosed in a pen, a fenced yard, or other enclosure, or securely tethered or on a leash." And then B, "No person having the control or care of any dog shall suffer or permit such dog to enter or remain in a public park or recreation area unless it is led by a leash of suitable strength, not more than six feet in length. However, nothing in this section shall prevent a dog from being used without a leash to lawfully hunt while birds are game or to herd, guard, gather, or otherwise work domestic animals or fowls in or upon a public place or premise." Says, "So long as such dog is under the charge and control of a person competent to keep such dog under effective charge and control, and so long as such dog does not wrongfully harm or damage, or threaten to harm or damage any person or public or private property. In addition, nothing in this chapter shall prevent a dog from running without a leash in any area designated as a dog run or park by the city, so long as such dog is under the charge and control of a person competent to keep such dog under effective charge and control, and so long as such dog does not wrongfully harm or damage or threaten to harm or damage any person or public or private property." This section, item C, is, "This section shall not apply to any official law enforcement dogs on patrol." Okay, so what we need is a motion for the second reading and adoption of ordinance. And you'll have to give the ordinance, so moved, number, I have to give the number?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Christopher Edgar, to conduct the second reading and adopt by title only. You have to say by title only, or I'd have to read the whole thing, which I almost did, but. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake, adding section 6.04.035 to chapter 6.04 of Title VI of the Blue Lake Municipal Code to adopt dog leash regulations and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote on an ordinance. Yes.
For a motion?
Yes.
How's the member McKay?
Yes.
Um, I'm going to respond.
Yes.
Somebody member Edgar?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. All right, we are now on item six. City of Blue Lake, January 2024 flood event discussion. City Councilmember Gaffoni has requested that a discussion item be added to the agenda regarding the flood event experienced in January of 2024. Staff is available to provide information on the event, along with information on future planning, et cetera. City staff presented an after-action report to the Blue Lake Public Safety Commission at the February meeting regarding the flood event. Several community members that were affected by the flooding were in attendance and provided feedback on the event itself, as well as ideas for future impacts. Do we have access to those ideas? I don't know. I don't, I don't.
I could provide an overview.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, well, why don't you go ahead and tell us what happened at the meeting?
I'm sure, I mean, it's councilmember Gaffoni's items, I don't know if you wanted to open it differently, or?
No, no, I don't have anything, um, I just thought we should all, that all of the council should be aware of whatever information is out there.
Sure. Um, so at the Public Safety Commission meeting, we did an after-action report on the flood in 2024. There was a, a lot of, um, a lot of good input. We had several representatives from areas and specific households that were directly impacted by the flood event. Lynn Glenn is here tonight, she was, um, you know, she lives right adjacent to Powers Creek, and they experienced quite a bit of flooding on their property. We had flooding along Rodrick and the Horse Arena, and then just at various locations, Hatchery Road. And then obviously, we took a lot of water off of the, um, the new state culvert that was installed that overwhelmed a private culvert and then overwhelmed the county culvert and caused quite a bit of stormwater to come into the city, that is something that's absolutely abnormal, wasn't something that we had planned for or had actually even anticipated. Um, it was, um, it caused quite a bit of havoc on our stormwater system and exacerbated flooding that for us would probably be not necessarily normal, but something that we've experienced in the past. That flooding levels were, were definitely exacerbated by the amount of water that we received coming off of Greenwood. At one point, if anyone kind of saw Greenwood, at one point it looked like a creek was flowing down Greenwood, and then that came into our stormwater system, which exits out at the Horse Arena and goes out to the creek, which had already, obviously, was experiencing a high-flow event. Some of the things that we talked about that we would do differently in the future, we ran out of sandbags early on. The sandbag situation was exacerbated because the sandbags at the city did have stockpiled. Basically, all went up to the county property, because there was so much flooding going on up there that most of our resources went up to Blake Boulevard to try and alleviate the flooding that was going on and trying to redirect the water back into the county culvert and alleviate flooding that was coming into the Shepherd's property. So it was a great use of the resources, but it quickly took away resources that we could have used in town. So we had quite a few sandbags on hand, but those were quickly depleted based upon just the severity of what was happening on the, the county side of the Boulevard. So obviously, we're, you know, happy to, to put the resources up there, we had staff working up there, we had the fire department working up there, our city engineer was up there. But that did deplete our sandbag resources. We were able to find sandbags in, at Pearson's. We, we went all around Arcada McKinleville, but at that point, everyone was buying sandbags. But we now have a pretty good stockpile, and we have our stockpile of sand that's available at City Hall, it's still out there now, we are supposed to get some substantial weather this week, Thursday through Saturday. The biggest part of that event will be snow and wind, there will be quite a bit of precipitation, but it's not anticipated to invoke any flooding concerns. We did talk about communication, city staff was, um, was on, in the community during the event. Hal and I, we, we were out early and shutting down the roads on Hatchery, we worked with Humboldt County Roads, we worked with Sheriff Department to get those roads shut down. Glenn was out making sure that all of our pumps and our wastewater system was functioning properly. We had other staff that came in to help with sandbags. We called in other public works, I mean, we only have five people in public works, so it's not a lot of people, but we did have additional public works, um, members that came out just to kind of help pull ditches in case we were getting any, um, areas where maybe the storm drains were getting plugged up with debris, so we had people out there. We were coordinating with the fire department. We had been in communication with the fire department, so the fire department was deployed. The incident was very, was very isolated to just a portion of Blue Lake, which was fortunate, because I think if it had been a larger community-wide event, you know, our, our resources get stretched really thin really, really fast. So luckily, you know, we were, we were able to kind of keep the event, you know, to this area, and I know councilmember Gaffoni had flooding at her, um, her location off a railroad, we were monitoring that, um, that waterway as well, that, um, that one was impacted as well. But the majority of Blue Lake really didn't experience too much. There were areas of the community that didn't even know there was a flood event happening. So it was a fairly isolated event, so it allowed us to kind of concentrate our efforts. I think in the future, like I said, we would, we're looking at, you know, being better prepared with a stockpile of resources. The weather event, we, we did get a weather briefing, but the weather briefing did not, it, it didn't provide the information to the municipalities on the level of the event that we experienced. And we had a, an after-action meeting on that as well, and I was in contact with Humboldt County OES during the event as well. And that was one of our concerns, you know, we, we knew. And that was one of our concerns, you know, we, we knew we were going to get a weather event, but we did not anticipate getting five inches of rain in like twelve hours. Uh, and so that was something that overwhelmed a lot of the municipal, um, governments were, were struggling with that at that point. Um, so, you know, it was, it was kind of a, a strange weather event, um, but I don't think it's something that we can um, disregard in any way because our weather is changing, the climate is changing, and these are things that we now have to to learn from and anticipate and better prepare for in the future. Um, we received, like I said, we received a lot of rain in a very, very short amount of time. If that had been spread out over a twenty-four hour event, we wouldn't have been in the same situation, but because it came all at once, um, we were definitely overloaded. And our ground was pretty saturated. Um, so I think all in all, um, for what the event was and maybe what it could have been, I think, um, I think we handled it pretty well. There's always opportunities to learn and to, um, transition and preparedness is something that you're, it's not a stagnant, um, activity, you know, you're you're preparing, you're constantly learning and preparing as you go. And so, um, we talked about also coordination with CERT. Um, I know CERT met with the fire department because the fire department is actually who activates CERT. The city provides the umbrella insurance for CERT, but they are managed by the fire department. Um, in this incident of like, you know, if there was a large scale incident and the city was, you know, really needed the assistance, you know, we would, we would coordinate with the fire department for that activation, but obviously we could go straight to CERT if we needed to. CERT members were active, but they were also active because their own properties were impacted. Um, so there were a lot of CERT members around, but they were also filling, you know, sandbags and things for their own properties. Um, so um, lots of community support, um, lots of people came out to help, the old crows came out. Um, neighbors were helping neighbors, and I think in an event like this, that's really what has to happen. You know, the city has a role. Emergency responders have a role, homeowners have a role, and then the community as a whole has a role. Um, the city is not emergency responders, that's not our role. Our role is to make sure that city infrastructure is functioning and protected so that we can help to manage the event. Emergency responders are there to respond if there is an emergency, a life threatening emergency or a need. That's not the city's role. Um, you know, homeowners being prepared yourself as we see these events, um, taking place and changing. You know, do, having your own preparedness kits, I mean, that's something that we talk about a lot. If, you know, we have some properties that have some historical flooding, so making sure you have your own sandbags. Uh, making sure, like Mr. Swatsky said, you know, being alerted, um, and in the loop for weather events. Um, those are all things that, that we as citizens can do for ourselves to help ourselves better prepare. So, um, I think in the future, like I said, we'll be definitely, um, stockpiling some supplies, um, trying to stay on top of, you know, weather events as, as these things, um, take place. Um, continuing to open lines of communication. Um, I think, um, talking with CERT and the fire department about some, uh, cross training and maybe some, uh, tabletop exercises that we could do to, um, better prepare ourselves. But I think all in all, for being a really small community and having limited resources, I don't, I, I think we did pretty well. Um, Sunday, when I got up to drive around, people were out walking their dogs, the sun was shining. And it was almost as if the event had taken place. It was almost really weird. So the waters luckily receded fairly quick, um, and we didn't have any damage to any homes. We did have one business that had damage at Wallison Hines. Um, he took, uh, some floodwaters came through his property. Partially, that was part of a culvert issue located on that property that, um, that we're hoping to help kind of remediate in the future. But other than that, I think people bounced back fairly quickly from what we've been told. Um, and we didn't have any reports of any, um, substantial damage, um, to report to, uh, OES. We did report Tom's damage, but that was about all we received.
Did it go through a building?
It went through his office. Yeah, he, and I don't know, I don't think it flowed. I think he just.
I, I talked to him the other day.
Infiltrated.
He moved everything out of his office, the whole, the whole office area was flooded. His old bar area, which he doesn't use anymore, is full of all of his office equipment.
Tom Tellits?
Yeah.
Okay. Did OES provide an after action report?
Yeah, so we always do an after action, um, meeting. Um, so we called, they called a hot wash. Um, and so we, um, we, we talked about, you know, what had happened and um, what we would do better in the future. And like I said, uh, you know, people were taken a bit by surprise with just, like I said, we knew them, the water was coming, we just didn't anticipate that short amount of time. That's what really caught everyone off guard. Um, so that has been kind of a topic, um, throughout our working with. Because when we do our, um, we have our OES meetings, you know, the National Weather Service is there. They provide, like, this morning, we had a, a weather briefing about this event that's coming up and just the impacts. And so the weather service is on and there's, I think there were seventy-five other representatives from agencies and cities and um, emergency responders and community, um, advocates that are on those calls. So we get a full briefing and we look, get to look at the weather models. Um, we look at hydrographs, um, and then we, you know, talk about what impacts could be sustained and what resources we might need. So, um, things that, at this meeting that got talked about a lot are, um, travel on the mountain passes. Um, and that's something that's really critical for first responders, um, trying to get up, you know, where chains are going to be necessary, down trees. Um, so, you know, the first responder groups prepare in a certain way. Cities prepare in a certain way, um, other community resource providers prepare for, um, we, you know, talking about warming centers and and things. So everyone's kind of got a little bit of, of a piece of that, and the information resonates, um, to each entity a little bit differently based upon what your impact predictions are going to be and what your resource needs are.
Wasn't some of the problem, um, in the county culvert that was stopped up by a plastic bag or something? And, um.
It was a very big rock.
It was a lot of debris came down.
Okay, alright.
Rock has been there for a long time. And, I mean, it's not a hundred percent the county's fault. There's a lot of, a lot of things that played into what happened. But the rock that was removed out of that culvert has been there a very long time.
I was gonna ask if there's been some mitigation.
Yeah, so.
Situation so that things will flow a little more easily, because I understand that in a perfect scenario, that, that is supposed to flow down towards the Mad River, basically. It's not supposed to flow, flow into Blue Lake.
No, so basically, the, the county, the, the state culvert is a new culvert. It comes down the hill off of the two ninety-nine, and then it comes into the private culvert that's owned on the property by the Patriot. And then that culvert then flows into the county culvert, which is the big cement, um, kind of triangle culvert above the school and runs along there. What happened was when everything came down into that private culvert, that culvert couldn't handle what was coming down, and it got plugged up with debris. There were rocks. They were pulling rocks out like crazy, and so it quickly overwhelmed that culvert, which then made it hop out of the county, and so it just sheeted it across the road. And then that came across the road and then came right down Greenwood. So all the water was come, off the hill was coming into Blue Lake at that point. So the goal, what everyone was working towards was trying to re divert that back into the county culvert. Uh, because it was also coming into the Shepherd's property and coming down and starting to flood there.
So that culvert that, that you said, um, was supposed to above the school, where does that empty?
Um, you know, I don't know, that probably goes into the, the storm drain system. Um, some of it could come into our system. May, it might go out by, um, where the Welcome to Blake sign is, there's a, there's a whole wetland system in, over there that has a creek system and stuff, so it probably some, somewhere goes into that. That culvert system could handle the water. It's just that it didn't go to it. So instead of going to it, it came right into town.
So is this drainage is coming off the freeway?
Yeah, it's the whole, it's a big new culvert that's above the two ninety-nine that, that's coming down.
There's like three of them.
Yeah, it's, it's big. Yeah, it's, it just got installed. I think it was just last year was finalized.
Yeah, because they had that whole right lane section locked off.
Yeah.
For months, yeah.
So have we heard from the rancheria about their flooding or the source of their flooding? I'm, I haven't, um, I was just curious if they had identified any particular problem or source that inundated them.
Um, no, we haven't had any contact with the rancheria. Um, during the flood event, I did go down to reach out to see if we could get sandbags and any resources, because they do have the resiliency center, um, and they didn't have any staffing, um, on at that point. So I was able to talk to a security guard who informed me that from what he knew, they didn't have any resources and they didn't have any staff on, on, on staff at that point. So, um, later in the day, um, during, towards the evening, when they started to experience flooding, they were starting to evacuate their facility, and they were evacuating it down Charton into Blue Lake into our flood zone. And so I met with the, um, their, uh, fire chief at that point and one of their representatives to redirect, to get them to stop directing traffic, because they were directing traffic into Charton that was then having to turn around. And so people were turning around people's yards, and it just created a whole problem. And so we were able to get them to redirect and get them back out off, because they had a concert that was, uh, people were coming in to the casino for a concert, and so there was a ton of cars coming in, and so it was just.
And they canceled it.
They canceled it for those car, people didn't know.
So they weren't directing people back up to the Boulevard?
Finally got them to direct them back up and out to the highway. So they were telling them, basically, our road is closed, keep going. And so that sent all of that traffic down Charton Road to the end where we were flooded down here. And so we were telling cars to turn around. And so all of a sudden, we were taking all of the traffic from the casino into Blue Lake, into an area that needed to reroute them. So we had a major, major cluster. So we were able to coordinate with them and, um, and get them to get staff up on the highway to, at the roundabout to let people know that it's closed, you just got, you can't come in, and then also redirecting all the traffic that they were evacuating from their site to evacuate them back up and not down Charton Road.
Well, I know that at least one house home was lost, um, on the rancheria. And there may have been more, but they experienced quite a lot of flooding and, and they started flooding pretty early. I actually drove through there, I want to say maybe three o'clock in the afternoon. And there was quite a lot of flooding, but it got a lot worse. So, um, and I, I, um, if anyone's read what I wrote here, I was just sharing that with, with staff. I didn't, uh, expect it to be here, but it's kind of, you know, it's all relevant information. Um, so the creek next to my house hadn't flooded for twenty-five years, and twenty-five years ago, it flooded three years in a row. And, um, it turned out that that was because the culvert was failing under the road at some point. It was, um, collapsing. And so the city did go ahead and, and repair that and replace that culvert. There's probably some, we're in the neighborhood of three to four hundred feet of culvert underground. So the open creek system feeds into that. So like I say, it's been twenty-five years since that system was overwhelmed and, um, and it actually became overwhelmed further upstream than that culvert. That culvert did fail, but I suppose it may have failed if the water had gotten to it. So, um, and also what I mentioned here is that, um, some of those, um, debris catchers that were put in place by the PG&E, uh, folks that did the PG&E work, were still there. And so that caused flooding. And, uh, myself and some of my neighbors actually pulled those out and were able to, um, were able to relieve the flooding that was about to overwhelm two other homes, um, because those weren't draining. The big, I mean, I'm talking like giant, the giant grated manhole, um, you know, stuff was just totally overwhelmed. So, one of my neighbors, Dave Nakamura, who, um, who used to be on the council, he got, uh, he got elected to, uh, go stand, um, under the drain and, and help me guy, guide my pry bar into the grate so we could pick it up. And, uh, anyway, it was a little bit entertaining, but, um, you know, he was in over two feet of water standing there. So, um, so that's, you know, a little something that the city, uh, staff might have been able to, uh, to help us with before the storm hit, to make sure all of those, um, those, um, grates were clear. And, and Hal did come by when we were taking care of that, and, um, and I asked him about sandbags, and he said he was gonna go get some sand. Um, at that point, from, from our purposes, sand was, it was too late for us to be putting up sandbags because we were already underwater. So I don't know, I don't know what triggers the whole sand and sandbag thing. You know, I remember years and years ago, I remember coming down here in the middle of the night and getting sandbags. But, um, but I don't recall all those years back, you know, at what point the whole process got triggered. Um, for my purposes personally, I would have needed sandbags at least an hour or two before the sand was available.
So, sand was available the night before.
It was.
Was it?
We had a sand station. He was getting more sand.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, before it even started raining, there was sand, sand and sandbags out there.
Okay.
We prepped everything the night before.
So how was that communicated to the, to the community then?
Um, well, I mean, it's, we usually have sand at the city corp yard, and so most of the people who are along the creek who normally need sandbags, there's just a couple of properties that are kind of our normal, um, uh, residents that require that. You know, with the shutdown of the road, you know, we had to move that location, so it was in a pretty prominent location here. That, that was the new sandbag station.
Well, I did see it here, um, but I'm, so there was no sandbag, the sand the night before was at the corp?
No, the sand was here, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's easier for us to not, if we have the sandbag station here, then I don't have to have a staff there. If it's at the corp yard, then we have to open it. And so the last event that we had last year, I had to staff the city corporation yard until like, I don't know, it was like eleven o'clock at night. We were out there in the rain helping people. It was just one resident. But we quickly realized that it's better to put it in a location that you don't need a staff member to open the gate and close the gate, so.
Well, historically, it was out here.
Twenty now, like the event you're talking about twenty-five years ago, I remember being out here filling sandbags.
Yeah, there were, yeah, there were three years in a row where it was pretty bad.
It seems like it might be prudent if you live near a water source like that, like a creek, that you might want to just have your own sandbags, like, because.
Well, again.
Especially with the weather changing and.
If you expected, um, well, I will, because now I know.
Right.
Store them and they'll be available.
Yeah.
But, you know, it just, um, if I knew there was a source of sandbags, I might have chosen an hour earlier to go get some, but I didn't know there was a source. I looked on all the, you know, all the Facebook pages and all the everything, and it was just like, you know, nobody was talking about, hey, really gonna be in trouble, and here's what we have to offer, so, um.
I'm pretty sure I saw a post on Facebook, on at least the Blue Lake Happenings page, that sandbags were available at City Hall. At least there was more than one post about that.
Well, I did see it after the fact, but I don't know if it happened before.
It was, it was before.
Right, but that's something I'm asking, I'm, I'm kind of proposing that the city, when, when the city has a resource available to the public, that we have some sort of an official, um, posting or some, some way to get that information out to people. I think that would be appropriate. And, uh, anyway, you know, obviously, it was a very unusual event. Um, twenty-five years is a long time to go between floods, so, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't jump in my truck and go look for sand because I thought, it's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen. I watched the water get deeper and deeper. I'm like, it can't happen, it can't happen. That, that culvert's gonna over, get overwhelmed. And it didn't. It was the culvert up the street. But anyway, um, live and learn.
Well, thank you for all the work that the city did, and thank you CERT people, and, yeah. One idea I had was, um, and you're here today, Angela, you do sewing? Now, I, one of the things that I heard was that the sandbags, like, they were using grain bags, but they're kind of too big. What kind of a bag, could it be something that could be sewn, like a project, and this, like, the city could do a, a project of sewing?
The feed bags were donated by Julie Christie, uh, in an emergency because we ran out of sandbags.
Exactly.
It wasn't, and now that we, we have a stockpile.
Oh, we have plenty. Okay, okay.
Yeah, normally.
Project. Your own sandbag.
That was a Blue Lake Facebook emergency post, hey, we need bags, and Julie came down with a bunch of bags.
Okay.
Are the bags typically like burlap?
No, it's like a plastic, um, Mylar's, but like a woven Mylar bag.
A lot like feed sacks, but a little heavier and smaller, and they have a tie, a tie on.
They have an open drain, they're not sealed.
What's, how many sandbags do we normally stockpile?
Well, they come in bundles of twenty-five. They cost about fifty cents, so we usually have a couple hundred. Well, they come in bundles of twenty-five. They cost about fifty cents. So we usually have a couple hundred. Um, which, you know, we wouldn't even have gone through half of our sandbags if what happened up on the county side hadn't happened. Um, so that's where we just got overwhelmed. You know, we um, I think we bought, I think about a hundred dollar, I was able to get um couple hundred sandbags from Pearson. So um and then since then, all of a sudden, there's just sandbag. Everyone's got sandbags that they're giving out. I think the Resource Center got an allocation of sandbags. So I think we have literally hundreds of sandbags right now. Um, so so we're 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 more than prepped. But what we'll do is um our Public Safety Commissioner, Stephanie had recommended, maybe we have a couple stockpiles in different locations, which I think is a great idea. So we talked about having a stockpile at the um the old county barn, um, well, it's now the uh the other fire station uptown, um, City Hall, the corporation ours. We can kind of just move things around. Um, but yeah, we're we're fine on sandbags.
Okay. Well, I did end up using a bunch of feed sacks that I had uh and I used um probably fifty sandbags to to uh protect the part of my property that flooded, the part of the house. And so um so I think it would, we should, I don't know, maybe maybe the city should have something more like a thousand sandbags on hand. Just at a general, just kind of a par level of what to keep. Um, I think two hundred is is, you know, based on my usage and need, um, is is not gonna it's not gonna do the trick. So um
But as mentioned before, people who live in that area should be prepared for that. I know, it it's not, it's not.
I understand, Chris, but let's not penalize people for not, for not using their crystal balls correctly.
No, no, I'm not saying they shouldn't use a crystal ball, but it's not the city's responsibility for them to take care of themselves.
I think it is the city's responsibility to have adequate emergency equipments. Um, that is reasonable on hand. I think it is.
It's, yeah, no, it's it's like we handing out free healthcare to everyone in the city.
I think, I think it's not the same thing.
Okay, well, this is a discussion item only. Um, so if we're done discussing at the council level, I can open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to uh make questions or comments, um Lynn Glenn and then Kent Sawatsky and then Julie.
Thank you. Um, I am here as a, uh, one of the coordinators of the Applewood Broderick uh Charton um pod. You know, as we know, we have emergency preparedness pods here in Blue Lake. There are three different pods. And our pod has fourteen families and eleven of our families were affected by the flooding from things like Ross, Origin, a bathtub um for four feet of water and from the property. Uh, we had uh water flowing out of we have a system that usually works in under most circumstances, but it was exceeding the system of flowing uh down towards the rancheria. Um, we had people who have floodwaters in the foot of their, of coming into their front doors. There was a lot of stress um with some families. And we had a good discussion at Public Safety Commission and some good ideas came up. And this this discussion right here tonight has been really helpful because we are going to have, we um as part of what we do as a preparedness pod, as we talk about what could happen in our neighborhood and what we should do to be better prepared. Uh, because the better prepared that all the citizens are, the less stress on the city staff. Because the city has a big role to play in every emergency. So we had some questions that we came up with and and some of them were answered tonight. Um, we wanted to know what what are our responsibilities, you know, to be prepared for flooding. Um, and I think, you know, certainly we um, two, two of our families had sandbags that we contributed to the city, but when the city ran out. And we've uh replenished our supply, of course, but uh having sand is something the city can do in this. And Glenn said that there was sand down at the corp yard, but you couldn't get to the corp yard because it was flooded.
Oh, we were able to access. We we'd made several trips to the corp yard.
I mean, citizens couldn't get
Oh, no, no, we didn't. Well, the road was closed down, so.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So he realized that was gonna happen. So they brought, and they and they do often have sand up here. I think that's kind of a tradition. So there was sand and that I think is a very appropriate role for the city to um have for the citizens because it's my practice was all around the beach and my buckets, you know. Um, and so we wanted to know if the city would always have sandbags. Is that kind of something we can expect? Uh, and what our responsibilities were. And that thing was uh, we lived not right next to the creek. We had, like I said, up to four feet of water on our property and some pretty big flows. We had some streams going through. And partly because the creek was um not flowing properly. So we're wondering if it's possible for the city to annually go go in there and clear out the the willows and the berries every every year. Grow up, fall down and impede the flow of the water in the creek. Because we think if the water had been able to flow freely, it probably would have been less um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have overtopped as quickly and as much as it did. So that's just something we wanted to ask if the city can do. And the other thing is, is the noticing that you're talking about. And um I have um on a commission, on a committee with um somebody from NOAA, he's a the warning coordinator. So I asked him, so what happened was the city notified, were we as, you know, notified as um property owners? Um, because there was a pretty specific notice on Noah's website that I saw that night after the fact. Um, it said disastrous flooding of all areas near the river from Blue Lake to the mouth. Residents should be prepared to take appropriate action to protect lives and property, homes in Blue Lake. So there was some pretty specific knowledge that they had had and predicted. Um, but there wasn't really a way for them to get it to the city right now. He said, um, it's, you know, yes, gets it, but but like like Mandy was saying, this is kind of different because of the short time period that that rain came down. So it was it was a prediction, but not definite. So he, uh, Ryan said he would be willing to meet with the city and just talk about, what could you do? How could we work better together in the future? Because Blue Lake will be always um vulnerable um because of where we are on the river. So that's something that might the city might consider.
I believe that was our three-minute timer.
Okay. I would like to ask Linda continue, uh Linda, continue because she's our spokesperson from CERT and she should be able to continue what she has to tell us.
I just had one quick thing to say. Um, is that we visited other homes along the creek uh just to see if they needed sandbags because there really wasn't any communication directly with homeowners. I talked to Glenn and on the phone because I happen to have his member to ask him about sand. And he said, could you please go talk to Karina because she's called and she's having some problems? And so we went down and got her some sandbags, but there really wasn't anybody, you know, checking to make sure people were okay on the creek. And that's something CERT could certainly do. And we've talked with the city about that in the future, making something we can help with. Because again, the more we can do as citizens, uh better, easier it is for staff to do their jobs, to help us um all be prepared and deal with the floods.
And we need more CERT people?
We do need more in terms of recruitment. Oh, absolutely. People are strong back.
Yes, absolutely.
Who can prepare sandbags.
Young CERT people, right?
Young CERT people would be really helpful. Yeah. If you know anybody who might be, only twenty-three hours of training. Uh, one meeting a month or they can't have to come to meeting.
So do you, you have CERT people on your CERT committee? Or what do you call yourselves? Or your team, right? But then do you have like um, other auxiliary members or or a list of people that you can call on when there is something going on and you need more response?
We did do that and actually the crows. This is our auxiliary. So we have, we have some email lists. We have, we, because personally, we are connected to the crows and the lowless. Um, we put out a notice as individuals, we weren't activated as CERT members. And some crows came down like Mandy was saying to help out.
And then, um, so you can put out the call for more help and those people don't have to necessarily join CERT?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, I shouldn't say that. Um, yes, we can as individuals. Um, but there's a process that people can disaster volunteer work that was sworn in by the city to be able to work officially for the city. So all of the CERT members have already sworn in, so we're prepared. So um, yeah, that's, so so we're willing to to help and thank you for the information to help us prepare. And we should talk more about it, I think, in the future.
Thank you.
Uh, Kent Sawatsky and then Julie.
It's standard in a public forum when you have a timer up there, someone's timing, that timer is turned toward the person so they can tell how far much more time they have to speak. That's greatly appreciated. The problem, and you got a report from your city manager, but I'm gonna give a little more report of what the people said at the meeting. And I I think maybe you might want to see the minutes if they were accurately taken of the meeting. And a lot of the problem they felt was a total lack of communication. That's what I heard from people who spoke at that meeting. And there are suggestions, just so you know, in the county, your position's up here, if you were in a county supervisor, you would be going off to training for a full week to deal with emergencies. And I think some form of training here should take place. And you're the people who, as soon as there's a weather forecast, we might have a problem. You should be getting information of that and you should be on call should you need to come down and be the emergency services. That's what your job is. That's part of what I believe description should be if it's not, because you're the people who are elected, you should have the knowledge and you have the authority to do things that other people don't. I, my understanding is CERT could have, should have, would have been uh brought into to to play by either city manager. I understand she can do it, from my understanding, or the fire department. Well, apparently there wasn't communication between those two till the fact that they knew it was happening. My next topic here, I will go into some specifics regarding what we need to do. Just so you know, this next weather thing, this is one of the most dangerous times for weather. Is if we have snow, like we get two or three foot of snow in the hills, and then we get a south, south wind rain coming in. That you get the equivalent of maybe four inches of rain, it's in snow, four inches of warm rain coming in, you get eight inches of water within a matter of few hours. And just as fast as that, you can end up with this very large flow. That's what's happened in the past when we had the ninety-five incident, which was way larger than what this one amounted to. So you may wish to wash those particular things. I personally feel that during an emergency like this, you should have a staff member, uh, one of your staff members to answer questions at City Hall. Uh, somebody who's trained to do that. Uh, mainly they didn't know who to call, who to get a hold of. One person went through, uh, wasn't mentioned, went went through nine-one-one and was told they couldn't be helped, person who's right down here on this area down here. And she was very disturbed, you know, about not being able to get, she called Mike Wilson and he couldn't help her either. So um, whatever that says. But anyway, I think you really need to have some communication for the people. They're just, and it may be on some Facebook thing, maybe. I came down here and uh I came down and the, there was no sand. When I came down here, I went back to my house, got sand in a tarp. When I came back, Julie Christie's bags were here, sand was being filled. So there was a major void with no sandbags available. They got to speak.
Julie?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you for being so patient with letting counsel reach out to such and public. I think that's really important that um during, during this time, do you have a relationship? I think listening to them and answer very important as well, they have a lot of years of knowledge, um, in the area. Our family's three, nine years here, um, he's a river bar. And he's actually committed to be a farmer instructor that the clients have seen with the store. Are they being a teacher, a taxi driver, and they've always been very conscious of that. They've only been two weeks, they didn't see our clean shelves and drawers. They only take two weeks without power, so they're like, we're in a third of ten years. And especially if the look coming out of the disfarmer is ripping the puddle off my trucking in a hundred slides, you can see horns. I didn't get it slightly in the morning or because of the spill over from the county, it's all the red ways. I did contact the N B D that I've been testing through and making bags, media, right, deals, buys, if you need a But I think we could do maybe a more, like, help out, why do there's a road study program? Where we are looking at our structure, we're looking at the areas that we need to get support, look at the pain, to fix. Support, help, and have a voice for the G T O, so that we are acknowledged with our issues, and I just have to figure out here, blah, blah. So I think this is a bigger topic for tonight. Um, I think we need to revisit this topic. And we'll reconsider and then later perform the next uh weather event because since the firm's in a handle. But we were getting sent trail, like thirty days, you gotta get out and watch the planes, and they're regular flight. They're paying, you wanna laugh, but I was there, and it was funny, but I didn't find that. Or people don't wanna take time to do almost one, and read, present, and do, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, well, we'll come back to council again. This is a discussion item only. So I think we have a lot of really good ideas and planning for an event like this is very important. Appreciate the people that stepped up, CERT and the sandbags from Julie and of course, our city staff always working really hard for us.
So I am curious because somebody, somebody wrote to me, somebody who was in the Bay Area wrote to me and said, hey, does the city need sandbags? Is there something, we can go somewhere and get them and bring them home. Uh, because they were, you know, they were prepared to come home early and bring us more sandbags and um and I had to tell her I didn't know um what the situation was. Um, I hadn't gotten any information. And so that you know, that um that brings up a good point, like, does the council have a role in disaster response? And and what is that?
Well, we used to before we had a city management form of government, because I was on the council for one of our flood events and literally Sherman Shapiro and I were going door to door along Broderick. And pass, have, talking to people and seeing what they needed. And there were people that, there was one lady who had a little girl playing in floodwater in the, in the living room. We told her, you need to leave as soon as possible because we don't know what that water is that you're playing in. Um, and then the other thing often was done was there was a, we used to have a truck. And literally someone would be in the back with a megaphone telling people what to do. You know, that there was sandbags at City Hall or something like that. So I mean, there's all these old school ways to do things. But sometimes you need to do when there's an event and possibly phones or something don't even work anymore. So
Right.
There, there is a role, yeah.
Well, and disaster management has changed drastically. Um, after Katrina, we learned a lot about communication and training and having a coordinated system. And that's where the incident command system comes into play. And that's what we all train on. So all municipalities, staff trains on the ICS, all emergency responders train on the ICS, all state and federal um employees train on the ICS, which is a coordinated command system. And so we all speak the same language when it comes to emergency response. And so we routinely train on that. Um, and that's, that's how incidents are now managed. Because in the past, they were very disjointed and as disasters and events became more severe and more regular. Uh, uh, an old school system of, you know, a P A on a truck just isn't gonna work anymore. And so it's, it's really about training, identifying your resources and making sure that everyone's working and talking and speaking the same language. And so that's where, that's where incident management has, has gone. And that's um, the, you know, that's where we all train with FEMA. Um, you know, our staff is trained through the incident command system. We're required to meet certain thresholds of training levels. I have um a higher level threshold of training. And then we also have it as emergency responders, um, if we're members of the volunteer fire department. So it's because what's, what's important in in emergency is that you don't overwhelm your resources and that you spread your resources to the areas that they best can respond to. And you don't have the city being in charge of everything. Because we know that with a small staff, the city can't take it on. So there's things that are gonna be dropped. So the city does not respond door to door. We don't, that's not our job. If you are stuck in your home and you have an emergency, you don't call Mandy, you call nine-one-one. And nine-one-one has a dispatch system. So they make sure, they triage that event and they make sure that they dispatch to you the resources that you need. And that's either law enforcement, you know, it's medical or it's um fire response, or it's a combination thereof. If there's something going on in the city that we need to be alerted to, then they'll alert us. So if there's, you know, a gas leak or something and we need to come in and be able to shut down roads or different things, we'll coordinate our response. But it needs to come in through a single system so that then that is triaged appropriately. And that response is spread across the appropriate resources. And so that's something that I think um you know, there were some comments at the Public Safety Commission about, you know, why didn't the city come to my door? Why didn't the city? Because that's not the city's role.
Because we used to do that.
Because we, we're, we don't have the resources to do that. So the city's role is to make sure our infrastructure is protected. Is to make sure that, you know, that we're making sure that, you know, our systems are up and running. And then at that point, if all of that's being taken care of, then yes, absolutely. And then at that point, if all of that's being taken care of, then yes, absolutely, our staff can go and, you know, assist. But everyone has a role to play and we need to stay within that role to make sure that those efforts are coordinated appropriately. And I think that's critical. Um, I've been on several incidents. I've trained at the FEMA Center in Maryland. I've done fires and flood events and it is. When you're coordinating incident and everyone is going by the command system. It's amazing how much smoother that event is. And so it chaos ensues when there's not clear communication and clear role establishment. So, um, yeah, everyone does have a role to play. US Council would have, if there was a large scale incident in Blue Lake, you would have a role to play. Um, the mayor would, could be a spokesperson for the city. The city manager, I would be running the event and at the point where it was beyond my capacity, I would turn that incident command over to someone else. So if it was something that, you know, a, a major earthquake. And, you know, there were a lot of things taking place that were outside of my control, I would turn that incident command over. I could turn it over to the fire chief, um, to run that incident. But you have one incident commander and, you know, everyone has a piece of that response at that point. So.
Whoever's highest qualified to come in. And then there's dedicated tree and flow chart that you follow.
And we have mutual aid agreements in place with all of our partner agencies. So we have mutual aid agreements in place. Um, you know, if there was an incident, part of our continuing operations plan is that if the city was impacted. And we could not run the city from here, we would go to McKinleyville Community Services District. And we have an agreement with them in place already that we could set up our systems, we could run our computers, our networks, everything through their office. Um, Humboldt Bay is a resource provider. All of our municipal, um, partners are all part of our mutual aid, um, providers. So if we needed a water operator, if something happened, Glenn wasn't here, I've got a problem, I can pull a water operator from Arcata, Eureka, Humboldt Bay. You know, everyone works together and coordinates and that's part of, you know, having those mutual aid, um, partners in place. Cause we don't always have all the resources necessary, but we all work together and we coordinate, um, for those responses.
So did the flood trigger the incident command?
No, because it wasn't a, um, it wasn't technic, it didn't really meet the threshold of. And I mean, it was definitely an incident, but it wasn't beyond the capacity of a local response. And so we did manage the incident in communication with the fire department. Um, and their fire department is management of cert. Um, so that communication was set up and everyone had their roles to play. And so we knew, um, we knew, we were in direct communication with each other on, you know, response. And, you know, like I said, the, um, any issue with someone who was felt unsafe or where that, you know. That needed to go through the proper dispatch, um, for emergency services, not the city. So we were coordinating all of our efforts at that point.
Okay. So you didn't feel like you needed to let the council know or, or ask for more help from anywhere?
At, at that point, and we were, it was such an isolated event, um, we were managing fairly well at that, you know. Once the rains receded and stopped, we were waiting for the waters just to go down. There wasn't anyone, no one was stuck in a home that couldn't get out. Um, there was no failure, a complete, of complete failure of infrastructure. We just had a lot of water, uh, sitting there, um, and, you know, waiting for it to recede to then see what the damage was at that point.
Okay, thank you. Um. Did you, did you have a?
No, okay. I missed the whole thing. I flew to Washington that morning.
Oh, United States.
But I was watching it. I could see it all on Facebook.
And I was watching.
I was like, oh my gosh, that's bad.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So do we, do we have a future time where we're going to look at, um, at a tabletop?
Yeah, we have actually been trying to schedule a tabletop for about, well, about three years now. Covid really, um, put a crimp in all of that. And then what our plan was with public safety was, our Public Safety Commission was to do. A Blue Lake specific tabletop where we would exercise a large scale event, but only with our Blue Lake, um. Resources, so the school, the fire department, cert, the city, the Ranteria, um, because that's going to be. That's probably going to be our biggest, um, scenario with, is when Blue Lake is actually cut off from other resources. And we need to isolate on our own. And so, um, we've been working to try and schedule that and we've had it tentatively scheduled numerous times. Because we've asked Office of Emergency Services to help coordinate that. The problem is we've been in like a sustained pattern of disasters. Whether it's floods, fires, earthquakes. Um, and so resources have been spread really thin through all of our service providers. So trying to get everyone together to coordinate that effort has been really tough. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern right now saying, hey, we really want this. As soon as your resources are freed up, we'd really like someone to come in and. Um, facilitate this exercise. Um, tabletop exercises are amazing. I mean, you don't have to, you know, you can learn a lot. By, through a tabletop exercise. I've been through several and they can be as intense and, um. As you need them to be, to be able to exercise your resources. Um, they're very, very stressful, uh, but they're a great tool, um, to be able to learn what you know and what you don't know. And what resources you have and what you don't have. And so it's, like I said, it's been on the radar trying to get it scheduled. We just haven't been able to pull in the facilitators yet to be able to do that. Uh, but it's definitely something we want to do.
So maybe, maybe we could plan a Blue Lake only, um, on a Saturday kind of a thing with folks that we do have access to. Um, sooner instead of later. I mean, if it's going to take maybe another year before we can do the, you know, the big tabletop exercise, maybe. Maybe we should think about doing something smaller that's, um, you know, that we can manage without OES. Just to get a, maybe, I mean, you know, recruit a few more volunteers, get people a little more aware of, of what resources we do have. And, and, and try to move towards a better, you know, a better response. Um, and, and have a more coordinated response, maybe the next time it rains too much or whatever.
And having been through those tabletop exercises, it is really helpful to have an outside agency facilitate. So if, if, if we are talking about doing one, doing a tabletop exercise outside of OES's support, um, in the interim. Then, you know, I would suggest we, we look to, um, another municipality, another organization to facilitate that. It's, it's much more clean having an outside person do that.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it.
Right. And to your point about, um, about OES, when I was at Eureka High School. For five years, I tried to get them to come out and do, um, do an active shooter training, tabletop training with staff. And they.
Five years.
Just five years. I was there five and a half years and I couldn't get them to come. It was really awful. It was really felt though, very vulnerable, you know, um, so we ended up doing some, some. Just Q and A's really with EPD is how we ended up having to, you know, um. Support staff in their, in their concerns about that.
Yeah, there's a bit of, I mean, there's a bit of a art and science to running a tabletop. Because the, what you're really trying to do is exercise from your chair. An actual event and management of resources and response. And so there's a lot that goes into it. And so you have a facilitator who's creating a scenario. And basically they create a scenario, they give it to you and then they're feeding you additional items, you know. Now the dam is going to break. Now you got power lines down. Now the school needs to be evacuated. But two ninety-nine's inaccessible and this is, and so through that process. You're given a certain amount of time to then start responding. And it's like, okay, I need to contact the fire department. I need, we need vans, we need transport. Who's going to call the kids? And the facilitators watching that whole process as well to see how you're responding, um. Like I said, I, I did a tabletop in Maryland where people were literally crying. They were so stressed out. Because it was coming at them. So it's, it becomes a real scenario in your mind. And it's, um, and it's really important to do it right and to be able to really get to those, you know, those core. Needs and, and response, um, you know, actions that you're taking so that you go back. Cause what you do afterwards, you go back and go, wow, like, we did really good here, but we really messed up here. Or we realized like, if that happened, like, we don't have those resources or we don't have those contacts. And guess what? We just lost this facility because of this. And so there's a whole after action that goes into it as well to really dive in very deeply into. What you're, what you're lacking, what, you know, what are your strengths, what are your weaknesses? And then how you move that forward into, you know, your next steps, which is training, resource management, resource acquisition, you know, um, contacts. You know, so it's, um, it's a pretty, it's a pretty important process. Um, and I think it's important to do it right. Um, it's.
Well, I don't, I don't want to get in the way of that at all, but I, I think it would be, um. Of, effective to have some sort of a weekend meeting in conjunction with cert. Where the city sponsors an event, we have it at the Grange, we invite the community to attend. And we, um, you know, make it all about, um, you know, emergency preparedness, what you can do. Um, you know, how, how, how citizens can help. Um, so.
Are you talking more like an emergency preparedness fair, like where you have your resource agents? Cause we could do that. That's something that the Public Safety Commission does a yearly annual event and they're planning theirs now. Um, and in the past they've done like, um, tsunami preparedness and different things, um, they've done. They've actually done kind of what you're talking about where they brought in all the resource agencies. So the community could come through and meet Red Cross. And, um, Office of Emergency Services there, the sheriff and everyone, um, could be able to see what resources are available in your community. That's something that, um, that they could do as part of their annual event.
And where do they do it?
Um, we've done it at the Grange and we've done, we, the last one we had, we actually had in the park.
Hmm. And what, like what time of year?
Um, I believe it's usually, it seems like it was like late, is it October? Yeah. Seems like it was dark and cold. Public safety is already planning for something like this to happen.
They're kind of taking ideas right now. That'll be on their, um, their next meeting is talk about what they like to do. So if that's something the council would like us to bring forward, I'd be happy to, uh, make that recommendation.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that that be put on their agenda, that we're very interested in something like that occurring again. And maybe with a focus on floods. I don't know if we need to do it specifically to that, but it might be a good thing to focus on.
Yeah, bringing up the whole school, it's a good thing that happened on a Saturday, really. Because it would have been more stressful if parents were trying to get, you know, worried about their children and everything.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot, there's a lot to think about in the, in, in that instance.
Okay, um, we're going to move on to item seven. Powers Creek gravel remediation. And this, the general information is that Kent Sawatsky has requested staff to place a discussion item on the agenda. Regarding Powers Creek and gravel remediation, Mr. Sawatsky has provided no additional backup documentation. Regarding this discussion item, and then there's an email from Mr. Sawatsky. As you are aware, the public has a legal right to put items on the agenda for Blue Lake City Council meetings. Please put the following topic on Dave Powers Creek flooding remediation. This would include input from the public and possible direction to staff. Being an initial conversation, I do not anticipate any support documents at this time. Please acknowledge receipt of this request. Okay.
I already have a, um, Powers Creek restoration program in place.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was.
Uh, yeah, we have a project that we're working on right now.
Let's do this summer, right? How is that affect, is that affecting the flow of the river, uh, the creek in any way?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the creek has a, um, a huge sediment loading, uh, issue. And that's part of the rest, the creek restoration will be to remove, um, that sediment, um, remove the invasive vegetation. Put back in native plants, um, probably some habitat structure and try to return it more to a, um. As much of a normal waterway as you can for something that's so impacted, um. You know, by kind of an urban footprint, so.
Are there any other agencies that the city is working with on that?
Oh, yeah, every agency.
Would imagine so.
It's like alphabet soup, um. We have DWR, we have State Water Board, we have, um, US Fish and Wildlife, State Fish and Wildlife, NOAA.
Yeah. So who's the lead agency on the project?
Well, the city and the Bottawatt Watershed Council have the project. And so we're, um, we're co-leads with the Bottawatt Watershed Council. No, we are not, we are not in the coastal zone. Do you not invoke?
No, no, we're too far inland.
So.
It doesn't matter.
Navigable waterway.
Oh, water goes there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, not us.
So I understand there's like a six hundred thousand dollar grant that was.
It's nine hundred and nine hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay. So do we have a start date for the project?
Uh, we are working on an implementation schedule right now. Our goal right now is to do, uh, vegetation removal. This year and then go to construction the next, uh, following season. Because there's only short windows where you can actually work in the creek. Um, and there's also a very limited number of contractors that are qualified to do creek restoration work. Um, and those contractors are pretty much bid out at this point. And so our bid package isn't ready yet to go out for bid. Um, so we're not anticipating getting a contractor that could come in and our permits aren't all in place yet. So we're still finalizing, um, design, engineering and permitting, um, but the goal is to go to vegetation removal this year.
And do you have to finalize all that stuff in order to do that?
Yes.
And so are you the person at the city that's working on the project?
Um, I'm one of the people at the city that's working on the project. Our, um, SHN Engineering is working on the project. Um, Gary Reese is doing a lot of the SEQA, um, the Bottawatt Watershed Council, um, has staffing. That's also working on the project in various forms. So it's a, it's a coordinated effort. We have a hydrology team, um, that's, um, involved in doing the, um, hydrologic analysis and most of the design. Um, of the project. So it's, um, yeah, it's a, it's a good team.
And that hydrology team, is that part of the Blue Lake City team or part of the Bottawatt Watershed?
So the Bottawatt Watershed Council is contracting with SHN Engineering to do the design and permitting and engineering work. And, um, Northern Hydrology is part of SHN's team that they brought on.
Okay. So Bottawatt Watershed Council is, is, um, leading that effort there.
Who's been going into the creek and like creating these pathways?
So those are, we had to cut into the creek to be able to shoot the topos, to be able to, um, establish grade. So that they could do the design and engineering work. So, um, part of the problem is that the creek is really, really overly vegetated. And so, um, we literally, you can't, you can't walk up and down the creek. It's, um, it's completely vegged over. So we actually had to go in and cut pathways in to be able to get the surveyors into the creek bed. To one, to find the creek bed and two, to be able to shoot, um, the topos so that they could finish all their surveys.
Okay, this is a discussion item only. Um, is there any further questions or comments?
I'll comment on how difficult it is to do anything in a watershed.
Yeah.
I've done a lot of work with biologists and with runoff and anything. And if a squirrel farts within a hundred yards of a dry creek bed, you have to get a biologist out there to look at it.
Pretty much. Well, I know years ago when we tried to remove tires. Big tires from the creek, which we all thought was hazardous and whatever. But Fish and Games said, no, they were a fish habitat. So we couldn't remove those ugly things. So I know it is.
Turbulence, so you get pools of water behind them. That's, instead, it reduces sediment. Tires do a lot of cool things.
Okay, um, I will open this up to public if there's any, uh, Kent Sawatsky. And then Julie.
I appreciate you agendizing this, although I didn't mention gravel in my request at all. It was Dave Powers Creek flooding remediation. And, uh. The, you have some major problems here and I don't know whether they're being addressed. I would like any of you who have the time to go down. And look at the design work for the, um, the pedestrian bridge down behind the Gencana. Uh, I went down there and looked at that, that particular bridge probably has cut the flow of that creek down by my just a rough estimate twenty to twenty-five percent. Yet the, uh, the varying for the bridge was put out in the flowway instead of being back on the bank, the bridge probably should have been ten to twelve feet longer. There's rip raft that's been put in there to further restrict that. For those of you who are not familiar with that, that particular area has no ability to go down further. Because we have our water and sewer lines encased in concrete right there. So you, you are in imminent danger of, uh, you know, this last time, oh, Mandy was down there, it was one small. There was one small little tree hung up on your other pedestrian bridge there that was possibly going to continue to hang up. We got rid of that right away. Uh, before they shut the bridge down. But you're in a position down there that if that, you get a log jam on that creek due to that bridge being there. That whole creek will divert out into other people's property. And that's quite possibly something will happen. I also would ask that you do an assessment regarding your culvert depths. Regarding how much gravel you have and different things underneath my particular building, a flow used to be quite easy to go through there. If you go look there, the berry vines that accumulated come down and floods, build up silk. So the flow underneath my building is probably constricted by ten percent at least. The same as your culvert, more constricted than historically has been underneath the road. Those are all things that need to be done. I'll be quite honest with you. Uh, be great to just go ahead and think you can go ahead two years. I highly recommend that you do some remediation on some of these things like that bridge be redesigned, the riprap be removed. And uh, and possibly something going on there. It only takes one year to flood and take out everybody and it's your responsibility to maintain that. And uh, this is why I put this on here. I think if you, common sense, just went down and took a look at that pedestrian bridge, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. I've said a bunch of people, then they go, you're right, that thing, that thing, that riprap shouldn't have been in there. The whole bridge should have been designed different. I mean, you know, even Chris might be able to design, you put wings on your abutment so it doesn't undermine them. Pretty simple, pretty simple engineering and uh. Unless we're willing to take a look at those things, you're gonna have office of life and property uh, as far as people, if that plugs up this season, next season. Uh, then that's on you guys. So I highly recommend you go down and have some engineer do a study on that particular one. I'd love to see the engineering and elevation for this project and I think you would also, I mean, so we know what's gonna be done. So we can tell whether you're remedying and doing your due diligence. So that would be appreciated to have that information as it may, can be made available to the public. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Julie. You're still a little soft.
Uh, I need to be able to write after the beach, uh, why is it in a hall of fun? I use that adjustment made, fire for the bridge, um, which I, there was a lot of time that was moved and brought back to net. There are also um, minute recordings on active humble, where I believe it was Lisa Rubin. Who was very transparent about what Madam Pearl Ryan and the city and um, are related for. Including uh older restoration, so we considered that all the areas weren't very adequate for um, doing the project. And during that time of the project, I had a lot of concerns and thought as well, um, coincided with her. So I was very happy that uh someone else spoke up about that. But I think it's just being the backlog update that now, quite understand um, that we're working towards. Uh, getting everything very done thoroughly. But when we're doing service as like process and design. That makes me very um, thankful. We've heard of our piece of the past. About kind of on the side, making it more of a, you know, little project uh, by a down area. To make it more of a sewer depression from tight clean area. And I just feel like that's taken out, she and I, I'll hold on for there, that's like they're in human. But I think it's important to look back at the, 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 the.
Are there any other public comments? We'll move on then to item eight. Humboldt County Sheriff Law Enforcement Contract Update. Uh, the sheriff contract ad hoc committee. Met with representatives of the sheriff's office on two occasions to discuss the proposed law enforcement increases and to discuss. Options and opportunities to reduce cost impacts on the city. The sheriff's office provided budgetary information for the city to review and provided a cost allocation methodology presentation. The costs were further anal- analyzed by the group and recommendations for further reductions were discussed. At the last meeting with the sheriff administration, a new proposal was circulated. The new cost proposal. Proposes a yearly base contract of one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. So that's down considerably from the original three hundred and fifteen thousand. The proposal is based upon a per capita cost allocation attributed to various cost centers. Associated with the ongoing provision of law enforcement services. The ad hoc committee, which consisted of myself and. Counselperson McKay and staff uh member manager Maker. Um, has reviewed the proposal and is satisfied that the new proposal represents a cost allocation methodology that is reasonable and justifiable. The ad hoc committee also committed, is also committed to applying for a one-year funding gap grant request. To the Measure Z Commission. This application was prepared by the city manager and was submitted by the funding deadline. Next steps will be presenting a formal contract proposal to the council for review and consideration. The sheriff will then present the contract proposal to the county board of supervisors for their consideration. The city is requesting that the cost increase start in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Due to timing of the submission of a final proposal. The sheriff is requesting that the cost increase be backdated to the start of fiscal year twenty-three. Twenty-four. And I don't really think there's anything more to really report.
No, and I, I wasn't sure how far we had gotten into this the last time. So I just wanted to bring it back. Um, to kind of keep it on the radar that um, that the Measure Z application was submitted.
Good.
And you know, I, I was notified by um Regina from the sheriff's department. That you know, that the sheriff would be um, you know, packaging the proposal, the contract to take that to the board of supervisors for consideration. And I think it'll be very important for um, for representatives from the city to be at that meeting when that takes place. Just to talk about, you know, our concerns and um, uh, I think we need to stand um firm. That this be implemented for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, by the time this does reach the board of supervisors, um, we're gonna be in budgets at that point. Um, the county's already started budgets. And so to um, take a cost and try and bring it back to. You know, at that point, we're almost gonna be a prior year budget, makes it really tough on both entities. Um, I think it would make it um, you know, difficult. On, on both ends for the city and um, the county as well. So I'm hoping that that will um. That that can resolve itself and that we, I think it's a reasonable thing to ask. Um, this has been a long negotiation. It's been, you know, a tough road, um honestly. Um, but I think we're at a really good place now. I think we have. We worked really well with the sheriff's um staff, um Regina and, and Captain Quinell were really great to work with and the ad hoc committee did a really good job. Um, meeting with them and, you know, asking really good questions and um, working with them to develop a cost methodology. That I think can be carried forward into subsequent years and subsequent um negotiations. So I'm really happy with where, where we're ending up. Um, obviously, any increase is, is tough, but going from three hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, you know, um, that was, that was a pretty frontal um process to now, you know, a hundred and ninety. Uh, where we actually have numbers to look at and I feel like they, they are reasonable. Um, and it, it makes it very clear. Um, to look at future increases. I think uh, we've landed in a, in a really good position and I feel like we have a good, really good rapport. Um, with the sheriff's department at this point and I'm excited that we can move it forward. Um, and kind of get this behind us hopefully.
Yeah, so do let us know when it's coming up in front of the board of supervisors. Cause I would definitely like to be involved and I'm sure there will be others that can maybe make adjustments.
And probably too, when the Measures Z applications come forward, um, being able to um, speak to that application that the city has made, you know, just. You know, the intent of Measures Z isn't to, you know, provide, you know, and uh, forever funding gap. Um, the way we wrote the proposal was basically, um, you know, we're, we're asking for a single year funding gap. To allow us a year to continue to build our capacity to um, you know, um, attract additional sales tax revenues and things. And adjust our budgets to be able to manage this increase. Um, and really I see it as leveraging, you know, a, a. A small amount of Measures Z funds, leveraging that with, you know, the city's um, contract. To be able to provide deputy services in the greater area as well as the city of Blue Lake. So in that respect. You know, partnering because we know that we don't have dedicated service. So those deputies that we're supporting with our contract. Are providing services into a larger county response area, which is, you know, um, is a benefit to everyone. So I think it's a good application. It's, you know, we didn't ask, we asked for thirty-five thousand dollars. I think that's a small thing to ask. Um, the city collects Measures Z sales tax. We are all also consumers and, you know, s- um, purchase items that trigger Measures Z sales tax. So I think, you know, uh, providing a little bit to Blue Lake to help us get through this first year to set us up for secondary um. Budget years is a reasonable ask.
So the application to Measure Z, is that a public forum where you can approach them?
Yeah, they have the Measures Z um, committee who kind of takes the first shot, does a lot of the legwork. Um, reviewing the applications, you know, um, inter- not interviewing, but asking representatives. Um, to come and speak to their application. A lot of times they'll ask you, can you, you know, can you get your application down a bit? Because there's always a bigger ask than there is money. And so um, you know, for the city, I felt like we asked for a very reasonable amount. And honestly, anything that we, you know, came our way would be great. Um, we would be appreciative of that. So um, I think it's an easy, um, it's an easy yes for the Measures Z. And it also, you know, I've, I've, I've always really felt like the Measures Z um, funding should be. Kind of a prorated allocation anyways, because it's, it's very hard, you know, when you're getting, we have this big large sum of money and everyone's fighting for a piece of it. It doesn't really allow you the capacity to, to leverage it or use it or count on it for future years. And so. It, it puts you in a really precarious position. You know, if everyone, if they did even a population allocation or something and said, you know, Eureka knows are getting this. Arcata knows, that allows you to really do a lot with that funding source. That allows you to, you know, you can use it for matching funds. Especially something like that where it's not tied to state or federal dollars, you know, to have a, a funding source that can be leveraged or in a grant or whatever. Um, is really beneficial. It's not the prettiest process. I've been through it several times and it gets really mean, honestly. And it's, it's not, because everyone's fighting for something. It's like, it can be cutthroat and um, I don't really look forward to having to go up there and, and do it.
Well, that's why more of us should be with you.
Yeah.
And so let us know.
And I think the Measures Z, I mean, they're great. They, they put a lot of time and effort into doing this. It's a hard process. You know, people are asking for things because they're really important. You know, you're talking about ambulance service and, you know, dispatch and all these things that are really critical. Um, so if they have a, they have a hard job. Um, and then it goes to the board of supervisors for a final kind of ratification, allocation designation. So. But our contract will be going to the board of supervisors as well. So that was one of the things that was brought up. You know, it was just the authority to increase our contract. And that was something that was um, uh. Was kind of prefaced by the board of supervisors. You know, they had um, they had taken an action that restricted. The capacity to increase the contract beyond a certain point. And so that was something that wasn't necessarily known at the time. That's now known now. So the sheriff will be taking care of that. Um, and that'll be part of also presenting a new contract. So once we have that contract, we'll have it reviewed by our council. It'll come back to city council for consideration and review. Um, and then, you know, we'll be able to say, yes, this is okay. Then it'll be presented to the board of supervisors. And at that point, the board of supervisors can also. Ask for concessions or make changes as well, because we're technically contracting with the board of supervisors. And the sheriff is a party to that contract. Um, so there's, you know, there's a lot of influence from the supervisors as well.
So is this um, contract on the table, is this a new contract or this is just? An extension or the completion of the existing contract?
So we're proposing a new contract. Um, there, I think the base contract is fine, but there are areas of the existing contract. That we both agreed, both parties agreed needed to be cleaned up. Um, the new cost methodology needs to be part of that contract. And there needs to be some parameters within that contract so that we don't get in a place like we, we have been. Um, that, you know, that's the way the contract, previous contract was written. Um, we've all realized that there are a lot of gaps and a lot of language. That needs to be cleaned up and reassessed and probably some new language inserted. So um, so that's something that the county council is looking at. To, to resolve that. They'll send us a draft so that we can then review that as well and give our comments. So then we have a, you know, a consensus document that we take forward for the supervisors to look at.
Okay, so the supervisors, I am, you had mentioned that this, that the contract um, that the sheriff was not. Authorized to increase the cost. And that, that information came from the uh county administrative officer. And I did reach out to her and ask about, for clarity on that issue. And she told me that, um, she told me that. That wasn't exactly accurate, that the sheriff could increase that.
He can re-computate the costs and make a cost proposal. But under the action that the county board of supervisors took, they put a cap on the amount that he could propose to increase. And the cost increases that he was proposing were well beyond that authority. And so actually, the, any increase to our contract. If he was to stay within the parameters, honestly, he would have to decrease our contract amount to stay within the authorities granted to him by the board of supervisors. So we had, it was basically, you have thirty-one, I think it was thirty-one months and four weeks. Or something of, of contract time. And within that time, you can increase the contract. But the total payable contract could not go beyond three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So our contract started out at one twenty-two, it went to one forty-five. The cost proposal that he submitted for three fifteen was obviously well beyond three hundred and twenty-seven total payable. So that's where the problem lied.
Well, it seems like that was a math problem on the, on the front end because he wouldn't have been able to even um.
I don't think he knew.
To even do three years with that, with that piece in there.
At one twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah. And then it's, no one gets an, an open-ended contracting authority. I mean, the council doesn't ever give me the authority to just go out and. Pay for whatever I want or have a contract. You know, you give me authority to authorize the city manager to execute a contract in an amount. Not to exceed a certain amount. So, and that's what those supervisors did, which is, you know, I mean, that's just. Well within their rights and, and, and logical that you don't give an open-ended authority when it comes to contracting. So it's, it's not a problem. It just needs to be brought back. And you know, at that point, it's a good time to also look at the contracting language as well, which is where we're at at this point. But. There, there's a box to stay within and, you know, the original demand for the three fifteen was outside that box. But I think everyone understands that now and um, you know, we're, we're all moving past that. And revising the contract, which is great. Like I said, working in an actual cost methodology, which is something we had asked for. Um, we wanted to see where the numbers came from and where those costs, you know, what, what were we paying for? And what was that allocation process? So that we had something to look at so that we could. Feel good that we were paying for something that of value that we were actually receiving. And so I think we're at that point. And it, it, you know, we. We were able to find um, honestly, over six million dollars in costs in their original proposal. That were able to be taken out to, because you, we were able to sit down and look at those numbers with them. And so I think that's great. It's um, it's where we asked to be from day one. And so we're there, we have a good working relationship with um. With the staff that was dedicated to the process. And uh, I'm really, I'm really thankful that they were there and were willing to, to take these steps. And I think it's good for the city.
Yeah, as I said before, we went line by line over every cost, you know, and that's when the adjustments started to happen. And it was a good negotiation. It was done in very good faith and um, very respectfully. And it turned out well for us. So.
My understanding is that the majority of the reduction is um, because of Measures Z, that all the Measures Z funding was pulled out of the model.
As it should be. You can't double dip. You can't charge us for costs that you're getting from someplace. And so that was brought to that.
But um, but I'm also um. My concern, I'm, I'm a little bothered by this idea that we're, we want to make this um, this new cost uh effective. Not retroactively. not retroactively, but for next year.
Why would you want the city to pay retroactive?
Because I think that it's fair. I think that it's fair to the sheriff that we pay, um, to the sheriff's department. You think that's funny?
No, I just, I don't understand.
I don't think that that makes good fiscal sense.
I think it makes good, um, relationship sense. Um,
We have a good relationship. Relationship was great. We were all in a room together. And that was not an issue with the relationship. There was no contention at all.
It's excellent to hear.
Yeah.
Um, but I, no, I, I feel like, you know, we, we call the sheriff's department our partner. And I feel like, um, that it would be fair and appropriate to, um, you know, where they're able to show us that this is what it's costing them to provide the service to the city. I think it's fair and reasonable that we, that we pay that for this year. You don't think that's fair?
No, I do not. Um, all right. I think, um, since this is really just an, uh, uh, update, um, I can ask for public input if there is any public input on this, uh, Mr. Swatzky.
Having attended a, a majority of the first Measure Z meetings for about three years in their entirety and still keeping track of what's going on there, um, the latitude the county has, uh, it's not already encumbered by long-term employee costs and raising employee costs, just about non-existent. In fact, I think the ex-mayor from, uh, Fortuna got up there, she goes, why am I here? She says, there's no decisions to be made. It's basically already put, set. So if you, if you track this and watch the meetings and, and watch the supervisor meeting and watch the Measure Z, it's all on channel ten. You can go back and see exactly what transpires there. Uh, I find it very interesting that now, since we've gone ahead and we, we don't have, we've got the benefit of not having Measure Z funds come out against us. But now we're trying to double dip into it ourselves by asking for money out of the fund when we've already been relieved from that particular part. Uh, do I think there's a very good chance, if you were seeing that, I wouldn't count on it. From what I've seen, uh, you've got major entities such as the city of Eureka, all the, what do we put in there? We put in one, one percent or one and a half percent of the, of the total sales tax goes to Blue Lake. It's just about non-existent. And so, uh, when you look at, if you look at somebody coming out their handout, where, uh, what Eureka puts in at least, at least thirty-two percent, I think, and these other entities make up quite a bit of the rest. They're gonna, they're gonna have their hands out. They've been cut way back. They're probably getting ten cents on the dollar what they used to get five years ago from Measure Z. So they're not happy and they're gonna, you're gonna, we'll see how it goes. It'll be an interesting one for me to watch and observe and probably participate in. Thank you.
And Julie on Zoom?
I just wanna thank council for keeping this, I think, a new session. I know her phone's been a long-winded discussion. I appreciate her asking, communicating with the sheriff's department. But I also have to defer, but it's something that's the money with, um, the fact that we do technically owe the sheriff's department money at some point, right? Do I have another thought? Do, not sure. But I just feel that we were asking for the beginning of our busy season, taking prepares for this. But you very quick prepare for your battle, okay? So I hope, um, we win it so that we're not being pushed, it will, it will.
Okay, back to council for any further discussions?
I had a quick question for Mandy and that, um, is when was the Measure Z applications, um, what was the deadline for that?
It was Friday.
Just this last week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, um, there's no further discussion on that. We'll move on to item nine. Um, this is the formation of an ad hoc committee to conduct the city manager annual performance evaluation. Um, and to give you a little background, in order to conduct the city manager's annual performance evaluation, the council routinely establishes an ad hoc committee. And that means a committee that's there just for a specific purpose and not for a long-term reason, to conduct the review work, including interviews and documentation compilation. The ad hoc presents their information for the council to review and the council as a whole provides a final performance evaluation. So tonight, um, I'm recommending that we appoint two members of the council to the ad hoc committee and direct them to complete the necessary interviews and document compilation. And, um, I have, um, the applicant, the, um, reviews that each council person needs to fill out, but unfortunately I don't have a clean copy of one. Did you, were you able to find one?
I haven't yet, but.
Okay.
If you show me what you, um, what you have, then we can see if we can find the same.
Okay, I'll come by and bring it to you and show you what I have. Um.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the interview portion of this? What, what does that mean exactly? Who's being interviewed?
Well, actually, that, the order is a little different, really. First, we, um, everyone fills out an evaluation form, all the council persons.
Okay.
And, um, I compile them with the other ad hoc, uh, committee member, whoever that is. Um, and then from that, it's a, it's a rated evaluation too, you know, zero to five or something like that. I can't remember. It's been a year. Um, and then, um, we compile all the, um, information. And then there's also areas where people can make comments. And then we form sort of a narrative. And I think there were five domains of the, um, city manager's job. Um, and so we compile a, we compile all that information into a narrative. And then what the narrative is, is what we present to, um, to Mandy in closed session as her evaluation piece that goes into her personnel file. And she never actually sees the specific, um, evaluation forms. What she'll get is the compilation and the narrative.
Okay, so all the information that goes into those evaluations comes from each council?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no other parts? Do, do the council members, um, gather information from anywhere else, other city? I mean, I know in some, in some situations, like, um, like city staff would, would fill out a, a survey of a sort, and then that would go back to the evaluators.
Yeah, we did that once years ago, but the last few, we haven't done that. Um, so it's primarily just the council evaluations. Yeah. Anyway, um, I would like to be on the, um,
I could be on the ad hoc committee.
I'm, I could also be on that committee.
Well, this is, um, something we're gonna have to, um, do by my motion and second. Um, anyway, uh,
Do we have to motion for each person on the ad hoc committee?
No, you can say Adeline Jones, Silver is the second person.
You nominate them to be on the ad hoc. Have to be on the ad hoc committee, or can you just get the information and compile a narrative?
Well, I, I don't know.
As mayor, right, I know, but I'm too. My question is, my question is, does, does the mayor, is the mayor required to be on the ad hoc committee?
No, not necessarily, but, um, it's, it's pretty traditional that the mayor is, is on the, that committee. It's been, it's been.
Well, it might.
Tradition.
I motion that Elizabeth McKay and Elise Gaffani are on the ad hoc committee.
I'll second that. Do we have to open it up to public?
Yeah, I would like to. I was kinda hoping to do that before, um, before we had a motion, but that's okay. We can, we can do that. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, um, is there any discussion from audience? Julie? And then Kent. Okay, and Kent?
I support the motion, but I, I would raise another question. Uh, you folks up here don't deal with the city manager on a, a day-by-day basis. And in most HR departments, the rating comes from the people that are the staff people. And you, you take your key staff people, maybe three or four of them, that represent different departments, like maybe Glenn from Public Works and maybe someone else from the Honaly or somebody or somebody else who's a staff people. And, uh, and maybe one other person, if you have another department, and those people also rate. And then that's, that's kind of important to get your employees feedback, because that's what your managerial skillset is based upon. That's basic, basic management class one oh three, when you're doing any kind of a, any kind of evaluation of someone. You, you wanna get the boots on the ground people to have some input. Otherwise, they feel like they're totally being left out of the process. And that's not good management either. Thank you. I'll continue to speak.
Is there any other public comment on this? Um, okay, back to council for the discussion. Um, it has been brought up that the staff can also be a part of this evaluation.
I think that seems reasonable. I think we could find a really good comprehensive evaluation that we could use.
Form.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you would.
I think I've already found one, actually. If I could refine it, it would be great.
I know where mine is, but I, I, like I said, they're not clean copies. I don't think I have a clean copy of the last one we used.
I'll look for the one that I had before or just find it. There's so many things available these days.
Mm-hmm. So there's.
Forward.
There's a motion and a second. Was there a second?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion by Christopher Edgar Edgar to have Elise Gaffani and Elizabeth McKay on the ad hoc committee. Is there further discussion? Okay.
And you seconded?
Elise seconded.
Oh, Elise did.
Can't you second it?
I don't know.
No, she could. Yeah. It doesn't matter if you're on it. Um, okay, so we need to take a vote. All of them favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
So, um, should we talk any more about, um,
You and I will talk.
Okay.
We're on an ad hoc committee together.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Hammer out other details, we can decide, whatever.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten, council correspondence. We have something here. Um, that was brought to our attention, but this is an attached message. The city of Blue Lake Mail can't verify the authenticity of the attached message. Um, dear Adeline Jones, Mayor of Blue Lake, California, to say I am disgusted by the behavior of the Blue Lake City Manager would be an understatement. Never before have I seen such aggression and disrespect towards a member of the public. This woman not only attacked a member of the public with her words and tone, but she needlessly escalated the situation and flat out lied to law enforcement officers when they arrived on the scene. The behavior of the other city employees was equally abhorrent. And I was concerned for my friend's safety when the gray-haired man yelled and motioned violently and aggressively. The blame for this egregious behavior falls directly on the city manager because staff were only following her example. She needs to be fired immediately and the entire staff should undergo extensive training on how to treat the public. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Lori Sims. Received on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I received a public record protest regarding, uh, I have tapped probably, probably a hundred and twenty of those and I brought in one to be imparted, plus comments from the.
Yeah, we, we all received a million of these things. Um, well, the city has now put up, uh, signs in the room to keep people out. Because evidently, the person, the perpetrator who did this, um, was, well, I, if you watched the video, yeah. Yeah, so, um,
It was edited for one thing, very carefully.
And the way they were dressed, it was very odd. They were completely in black, uh, with a hat and a mask. No, I've been taught to use the word "they" because I don't know what their pronoun is, okay? So, uh, that's how I speak now.
Yeah, anyway, um, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you've seen a lot of that. Is there any other correspondence?
What are, what signs are you talking about?
Oh, uh, the city hall. They're there.
There's new signs?
Mm-hmm.
To keep people out of city hall or out of somewhere else?
There's employees only.
Okay.
For sensitive information, scout.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay, um. Consent.
I said you gotta go to city hall.
I did go to city hall. I did.
Oh, you didn't notice.
Okay. Share after you're. All right, consent agenda, item eleven. Um, is there anyone that'd like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Let's pull everything. There's a lot of stuff in here. Um, and there's a, there's a full, wait a minute, sorry. There's a full financial report. Oh, that's.
That's not part of the consent agenda. That's separate.
Okay.
So is this the, um, the minutes and the warrants? Yeah, I mean, it's like, there's a name, but there's no, nothing written. Was there a comment or no comment? I don't know. I'm guessing there was a comment, so. What, well, all right, let's go, pull it. Okay, let's go, let's go by, uh, let's go with the first, excuse me, um, consent item, which is the meeting of November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Do we need, need to?
Are you pulling all of the consent items?
Apparently we are.
Do we have, um, who's pulling those?
Do we need? Well, do we need a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we separate all the items on the consent agenda. Second?
We make a motion?
I don't think.
I don't think so.
I think we have.
Normally you do.
But we do, okay, I'll check in it. All right. Motion by me by Elise Gaffani, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to pull all items from the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Public?
I guess, I guess one, hold on, check, how much you register? Is that, so can you refer agents that are on that?
Yes. Yeah, warrants and disbursements is one of the items.
Yeah. All right, back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, then. All right, let's move on to, first of all, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Page four, public comment. I see Kent Swatzky's name, but I do not see any comment.
Uh, there should probably be something there.
Sure he said. Um, page four, in the twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, November of twenty-eight, wow.
Yeah, it's a while ago. So, um,
So, comment on, um,
There was just no, nothing there.
How released?
Public comment. Yep. Oh, yeah, the item.
So how would we like to recommend or remedy that?
I believe it's a typo. Okay, I can look back through.
Oh.
It's public comment. He probably had a comment. It was just something didn't happen.
And sometimes we don't capture everything, um, depending on our notes.
Oh.
I can look back at the main and see.
It was on the Blue Lake Power Lease Agreement update. I mean, the other way to do this, just list the people that make comments. You don't have to list what specifically they say. Cause motions and seconds.
Looks like public comment is missing altogether there because, um, because when you go to number seven, um, which begins on the previous page and then we go into, um, to, um, council, council comments and then just, and then more council comments below. So it looks like public comment is missing. So there must, I'm, I'm guessing there might have been more than just Kent who made a public comment in that meeting.
So what happens sometimes is sometimes people interject at certain points. And when we're taking, when Honaly's taking notes, she might write down someone's name, but it's not necessarily a public comment. Um, like someone came to the podium. It can be an interjection of a statement or it goes back and forth. And we, sometimes those conversations happen very fast and we can't completely capture them. So it could be that she had in her notes that there was a statement made, but maybe didn't capture it at that point because it didn't come up as an official public comment to the podium. Um, and we're not required necessarily to capture all of those, um, and sometimes it just happens fast.
But there's no public comment for this item. It's, there's just that word and then one name. So it makes me think that there might be something missing. That the actual public comment for that item didn't, didn't get it.
Kinda rare that we don't have a public comment.
I don't even have it in my meeting minutes.
Okay, well, since we don't have the, I don't think this one was taped.
I think it was.
Oh. Okay, well, maybe go back and look.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's do that. Okay, thank you.
Tuesday, November twenty-eighth.
Sorry.
And other, and other than. And other, and other than that item, there is there something else?
I like to edit.
On this.
Okay, so we're going page by page. Four, anything on five? Six?
Four, I would like to amend something I saw here.
On, back on page four of that.
Number eight, my, uh, comment says the state, the contract amount is basically extortion. I was saying that what they were doing with the contract was extortion, not the amount. It was exorbitant, extortion.
So get rid of the word amount?
Yeah.
You strike that word. Okay. All right. I don't, uh, page five. Page six, jump in when you want to make a comment. Page seven. And that's November twenty eighth. So we can pass November twenty eighth. With that.
Pass November twenty eighth.
Second. Right, motion made to pass the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three with those corrections and additions.
Uh, well, how can we correct it if it's gonna go back, um, if she's gonna go back and review to see what's missing?
She didn't.
We're moving that they corrected.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be correct, so we don't have to look at it again? After those corrections are done.
We could, they're a matter of public record. Um.
Well, I just, when something is missing and we don't know what is missing or what's gonna be added, it seems that we would.
Usually they bring it back, right? You're gonna correct it and bring it back, correct?
We can.
Yeah, so that, that seems appropriate to me, just that we would see. Cause typically when we make corrections, we
They don't have seven.
We're asking for specific things.
Yeah, they moved a lot of items.
Um. Okay, so we're not going to pass the meeting record of November twenty eighth until we see it. This is what we're now deciding. There has been a motion.
Oh, 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 I see what I'm saying, yes.
Yeah. That seems appropriate since there's something missing and we don't know how big or small that something missing might be or what it might contain. So it seems to me that we should see it before we accept it.
Well, um, it's up to the motioner and the seconder whether that is agreeable to them. Cause we already have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm gonna retract my motion. You can make your own.
Okay.
What you want to be done.
So the motioner is retracting his motion and the seconder is retracting her second. Okay. So the, uh, regular meeting schedule will come back for November twenty eighth. Right, we're now on December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Page one. Page two. Page three. Stop me when I want anything. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. And page eight. Can we have a motion to?
I move that we accept these minutes as they are.
We'll just make it. Of November.
December.
Okay, motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by.
Uh, will we hold on for a second? I have a note here. I just have to make sure I'm.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Christopher Edgar to accept the minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty three meeting. Any further discussion? Public? Back to council. Oh, Julie? Do you have your hand up?
Yes, I just a little. I asked around my phone and for that he's trying. I couldn't that yet. You're actually following this procedure tonight. I will also let you.
Yeah, we can't remove, um, it's public information. Any comments that are made during public comment are therefore public record and we cannot remove those comments.
Okay, there's been a motion.
Comments, they aren't very.
Oh, well, then you could request those removed if you have the agenda. I mean, when you come up with the, um, on the portion that we're at, you tell us which ones what need to be changed.
She could have asked for it to be redacted, not that she was changing anything, and, but they were public comments that were made.
Yeah, you can't, can't remove those.
And I'm noticing that exact, um, I'm not sure that this needs to be in here. Um.
What page are you on?
Page seven, under.
Of December nineteen.
Eleven, mm hmm. So, so here is a synopsis of what, what I said about a previous, um, about a previous, uh, minutes packet. But I don't understand, it was talking about changing something to, uh, minutes somewhere else.
Um, to approve September meeting minutes with corrections? That's item eleven. Is that really what you're talking about? On page seven?
Mm hmm. Yeah, so I don't unders, I mean, so the September meeting minutes should have been corrected to, to, um, include these statements, but I don't understand why these statements are in these minutes.
Cause that's.
That's what you said.
That's when we approved the men, the minutes.
Okay. Were they also changed in the, in the minutes for September?
Well, corrections.
We make the corrections and then, and then save the final with the corrections.
So you, so you, whatever, whatever we, we asked to be corrected is noted in, in the consent item? And then corrected in the previous minute. Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor of approving Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty three minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. Uh, Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four was a special meeting. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty four as delivered.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Elise Stefani to approve the Blue Lake City Council minutes of January twenty sixth, sixteen. Sorry, sixteenth, twenty twenty four, all those in, oh, any further discussion? Public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. We're on the warrants and dispersments. Indicate the check number that you're concerned about or questioning and that will be explained to you.
Um. I still like, would like to have more information about, um, the invoices coming from SHN because it seems like, um, a lot of our, um, a lot of our expenditures to SHN or have invoice numbers, but we don't know what, what they're going to, like, um, on, uh, on January second, we have an invoice for the library, which is great, we know that. And then we have one for the truck route, and then we have one that has no identifying, um, information. So, um, and that's a total of over twenty six thousand dollars there, so it seems like, um, like we should have a little more information coming, coming along with those invoices.
Well, it's, it's their billable hours.
And I'm pretty sure.
Right, but.
Flip those up if you want all the information about.
Well, it seems, I don't, I don't need to go through every invoice, but I'm, but I'd like to know what they're for. So I suppose maybe, um, I mean, I don't know, if it's engineering, if it's planning, if it's general city business, if it's, uh, identified for a particular project. You know, that kind of thing. I mean, for the larger expenditures. And I'm, I guess I'm also curious too, how we budget for, for some of those expenses.
We contract with our city engineer.
I understand, but do we? Um.
And then they hand in their billable hours. That's our contracts.
But we budget a certain amount?
Yes.
Yeah.
Of course.
And then all grants are accepted by the city, and if those include engineering and contracting, those are added through amendments.
Mm hmm. Okay.
I have a question, um, on eleven, five, six, zero, and eleven, five, six, one, there's no amounts listed for those. Is that like a placeholder or something?
Those are check numbers on, um, so with the date of, of one, two.
So there were two checks that were written to State Water Resources Control Board on January second, two thousand twenty four, both in the amount of two thousand five hundred and nine. One was for the Power Street Footbridge Annual Permit Fee. One was for the Eighty Mary Trail Project Annual Permit Fee. So two initial checks were voided as they were issued to the governor.
Got it. Hmm.
Oh.
That makes sense.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Hmm. So maybe that should be noted when it's a void or something like that, so we know. Okay, other questions about warrants and dispersments? Entertain a motion to pass our, or accept our warrants and dispersments.
Public comment.
We have to go to public. Uh, is there anyone from the public would like to remark on this? Kent Swatsky?
Angela, you, I took a little time to go over this from an accountant's perspective, and those were through the highlights. I think there's a third check in there. So I just, a notation voided check, that would be appropriate, that otherwise people would say that would be leading to, but, but potential having checks that you're not having your checks and balance the system and who knows, you're writing a check and could be cleared. Um, what, some of these questions, maybe questions or comments, if you have a, a, a staff person that you can say could answer them rather than us going to them, because there were quite a few of them here. Did want to make note that the, uh, total for SHN engineering, and this is why I believe, uh, Elise Stefani's question is correct to know where these are going, because twenty five percent of your budget from these dispersments went to SHN this period. And when you have large sums like that, and some of them you're putting things on, the other ones you're not, that always, uh, you set precedent basically, and as far as clarity goes, they should also be, you know, especially large sums. Uh, you had another one in here, and it was a annual membership for Leibert Cassidy and Whitmer. Uh, or I assume it's legal because that's what the firm does. And it, and that was an interesting one there. You also had, so the question got answered there. Oh, the question was answered, why we had two checks for the exact same amount. Those were the two voided checks for two thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Appreciate that getting answered at one time. You had all the SH, we, we have checks going, uh, and this appears to be, just right, so you know, when, when you go through this check register, you'll see out of sequence checks. You come down to, uh, below check eleven, five, seven, three, you have two checks, uh, of two, three, five, four, and two, three, five, five appears to be a different account, but anytime you have a separate account like that, which is great, I'm glad to see you do have a separate account to make those transactions. It's just always interesting when you're making a check from yourself to yourself. I guess that's your accounting technique for that. Water Sewer Trust for twelve hundred. Let's see, trying to find the other one. The other one, we had another check there that, that had another check for zero in it. If I recall, there were three of them. Uh, here, here it is. It's eleven, six, thirty one, was also for zero. And I assume that was determinex international. Was that also voided out then? Only that would be a question on that one. Is, is that one voided and, and res, resent out or something or just a? Okay, and, and then we had, uh, US court page. And then, and then we had, we had an employee that also happened to have the same name as the, uh, last name as the city manager, Charles K. Mager. And so there would be a question whether that is, is somebody who's, who is a, uh, relative. So that's always something you do checking on things of that nature. So that would be a question for, for somebody to answer, who that particular employee is. And it happened to be for five hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty cents. So, um, that's a question I had on this. Thank you. If you ask the questions.
So who, who is Charles Mager?
He is my fifteen year old nephew who works at summer camp.
Summer camp in the winter. So was that?
He works winter break camp.
Camp, camp?
Mm hmm. Yeah, break, winter break camp.
Gotcha.
ACES has a program that anytime school is out of session, they provide act, summer air activities for students in the K tw, in the K eight system.
Okay.
Okay, if there are any other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept the warrants and dispersments. So moved. Second. Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, item twelve is our reports of council and staff. We'll start with council, um, and go around the room. So we'll start with you, Christopher. What?
My stuff was already discussed.
What?
About the flood from the safety meeting.
Okay. Very awesome.
Pretty much everything, uh, I had took notes on, Zee talked about.
Okay, thank you.
On two separate agenda items.
And then to, and you met, you did not go to any other meetings?
No, no, no.
Okay. And then, um, Elise Stefani?
I, we have not had a Park and Rec meeting, so there's nothing to report there. Um, I did go to an RCEA meeting. Um, lots of conversation about costs, um, and PG&E, um, the PG&E rate increases and, uh, projections, cost projections of power. There's, um, quite a bit going on with RCEA. Part of what they do, um, is procurement of power for future and, um, in the mix of power that they buy and contract for from different, um, different entities, um. So there, we're in the process of, um, going out many, many years to, uh, for procurement. Um, and there's quite a lot of, uh, financial analysis and projections and, and reports that are given. So, um, part of what, um, what RCA is doing is buying, um, solar power, um, and that, we have a huge project that's gonna come online in about six months. Um, it's been delayed several times, um. And so that's kind of exciting that that big, that that big project is gonna start putting power into the grid. Um, and it's gonna represent a huge portion of, uh, RCA's, um, power use. So.
Is that over the airport?
No.
Oh.
Our project at the airport, um, is not big. It's, it's considered a microgrid and, and it is enough power to power the airport and the Coast Guard Station, um, in the, in the event of a power outage um, during generation time. But I don't believe there's any battery storage there. So, um, so that's a daytime benefit only.
So where's the location of this?
It's in Southern California.
Oh.
It's a, it's a huge, huge solar farm.
Oh.
Um, and they ran into lots of problems.
Local.
No, um, we don't have, we have a local, um, we've contracted with a company that's building a battery storage facility on Foster Avenue at the old mill site. And so that's gonna be part of, um, of RCA's mix in the future, but that's, that's two or three years out, I believe. Um, before it starts, um, to operate and, um, and so we, we're, you know, we're just con, constantly working on, um, new contracts and procurement because all of these, um, contracts have, um, a run date of seven to ten years. Occasionally, there's one that goes a little longer, but, um, but there's lots of regulations from the state and the CPUC, um, to, uh, to have certain certain, um, quantities of, of power, um, for, you know, many, many years in the future. So, so that's what we talk about a lot.
Yeah.
It's very exciting.
Energy.
Yes. Um, and I did get, um, an email from Andy, the, um, our web hoster designer, um, and he's about to invoice us and he may have, he's, he's gonna invoice us, um, at. And he's about to invoice us and he may have, he's, he's going to invoice us, um, at the beginning of March and he might have already sent that out for, um, our annual hosting fee. And he asked, um, we're coming to the end of our six month. We said that we would contract with him for four hours a month for six months. And we're coming to the end of that. And I believe he's used every minute of that four hours each month um, to work on our website to continue to update parts that were not covered in the original, um, in the original update. And, uh, to solve various problems that have cropped up here and there. So he asked me if we would like to continue that. And if so, he was going to put that on the annual invoice. So that's a question for council, um, if we want to continue that. And I, I would recommend that we do because, um, I think we've gotten our, more than our money's worth, you know, we've.
So is that a future agenda?
A future agenda item.
We can't make, we can't make decisions on non-agendized items, but maybe that should be for a future agenda item.
Still put that on for next month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you have anything else, Elise?
Nope.
Okay, so I went to a, um, Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting on February eighth. And we, um, approved a proclamation recommend recognizing Jill Duffy for her years of service. And she was there and it was really great. She's done a lot for the HWMA in the past. Um, and then we received a preliminary timeline and pathway for the in-county organics processing plant. And this is again in response to SB one three eight three, which is the restaurant waste. And we're not yet ready um, to send out a request for proposals, but we're getting pretty close to that. And then I attended the, um, Economic Development Commission meeting for Elizabeth McKay because she was out of town and I interrupted. And I don't want to know where. Anyway, um, good meeting. We got an update of the sheriff's contract, which you heard this evening as well. Um, we talked about the Blue Lake Branding and Signage Project. Um, some of the spring events that are going to be held like the Karoki and, um, fundraising for a bike park, for the bike park. Um, we got a report from the Town Square Construction Project. And the bathroom bid came in very expensive, so we may have to look at that. And then the Blue Lake Park Development is coming along. Vodouak Community Project Design and Review is, um, going to the Planning Commission in April. The northern side of Taylor Way Master Plan and Parcel Subdivision, um, Storyland, that's the back, that's, um, the subdivision parcels. We're getting an update from them. Powers Creek Restoration Project upbeat vegetation removal this year. Um, and that was the nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar grant we talked about earlier. Um, and then we talked about Parks and Recreation Events Schedules Update. And then announcements was the Bingo that the Chamber was sponsoring on February seventeenth, which I also attended. And that was at the Grange. And we talked about some of the people's terms that are up and that has been taken care of this evening. Um, and then, then the last meeting I went to was Humboldt County Association of Governments and, um, we got an update on the Last Chance Grade. Their environmental document is being finalized in April to June. There was a meeting in Ory concerning their traffic safety. They're looking at something like Willow Creek where they put, um, the trees that really calm the traffic going through Willow Creek. Ory is looking at something like that. We, um, approved our twenty-three, twenty-four local transportation fund and our transportation development, um, local, uh, apportionment was passed. And our overall work program for twenty-four, twenty-five draft was presented. And it's due to Caltrans by March first with the budget. Um, and Beth Burks, who's the head of Humboldt County Association of Governments, she's the CEO. She was leaving for two weeks for Nepal. Una was covering for her. That's all I have there.
Okay, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, we already talked about the Valentine's Bingo. There's also, um, they, sorry, gosh, Chamber of Commerce is also talking about the roundabout, uh, sign updates, um, painting, adding whatnot. Uh, it was just a very brief discussion item. We'll come back to it. What else? Oh, there's, um, a strong, um, desire for the chamber to do a survey for of business, local businesses. Um, and we discussed some possible survey questions, how to get those out to local businesses um, in a format that businesses will respond to, like, like scale. Um, and then a potential calendar of events, including workshops for businesses, roundtables. Um, and then, you know, fun, fun events. Uh, last night was REDEC and there was a very, um, thorough presentation from Connie Stewart uh, regarding the Redwood Coast Connect Program, which is a consortia on broadband development. And she provided some updates. Uh, Vero is a company that's being, that is being contracted with. And they are doing the, they're doing the two ninety-nine, um, digital component, which will be done very, very quickly, which has been kind of amazing how quickly they're digging up two ninety-nines out towards Willow Creek and, and putting in, um, fiber optics. Um, then we talked a little, then she talked a little bit about, uh, so out at the, the Gorda, uh, subduction zone. There's underground optics that are being run. Those will actually be run all the way out to Singapore. And, uh, talked about the progress on that. There was, uh, kind of a, a fun event where, um, several folks from Arcata and Eureka, NOAA, blah, 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 blah. Were all at one of the, uh, we're all at Arcata PD where they do collect data for the, for the underground, um, fiber optics that are there. And, uh, Connie was saying that the, that the fiber optics and the, the technology that's all underground down there is so sensitive that there were ten of them that went out into the parking lot and jumped up and down for like ten seconds. And then went back and reviewed the data and they could actually see the movement and on the earth with, with this fiber optics. And so the, the, you know, an added benefit with, with having these fiber, with having these fiber optics and this is very, very sensitive uh, technology is that it could potentially add an increase to, um, earthquake or to earthquakes and tsunami information. So that was just something that, um, they're kind of in the very early stages of. One of the other components, and this is kind of an ask, um, and I'm not sure how to gather this information unless people want to email me and then I can report back. But, uh, so right now, there are for cell phone, for cell phones, there are two main areas where updates happen. So you get an email, right? You get a notice on your phone, you have to do an update. Those updates get routed either through LA, uh, off of Wilshire or up in Seattle. And so we're adding extra, adding extra anchor institutes is what they're called locally. And so those anchor institutes, the idea behind these anchor institutes is to basically create this, um, continuous wheel of, of information so that if, let's say, Med River Hospital is an anchor institute, they go down, right? That disrupt, there's no disruption to services. And so by, by increasing the number of anchor institutes, um, you know, throughout the county, we're talking Humboldt County particularly, Connie's, you know, on a bigger scale. But, um, beyond, beyond the, the traditional libraries and schools and fire departments and city halls, you know, kind of looking a little bit more broadly to where some of those anchor institutes could be to capture that, to, to capture that loop so that we keep that, we keep that flow of service. And so, um, we were, we were kind of talking about it a little bit last night. Um, Riley was there from Blue Lake and, um, and Jim from Trinidad. Um, but, you know, I was thinking about, I was thinking about Blue Lake a little bit and how we have, we have so many trees, right? So where do we put our anchor institutes or where do we recommend that the broadband consortia add additional anchor institutes? You know, would we do it out at, you know, the, the offices at Green Diamond? Would we add them? You know, um, it has, it has to be kind of a place, like a centralized place so that people could go to said place. Um, and so if there are any thoughts on that, as you know, we kind of just.
What are the requirements of the place?
It just needs to be like a building. So it couldn't be like a tree on mile marker seventeen, if that makes sense.
Doesn't have to have a power requirement.
It would have to have a power requirement.
No, like what, what is the power?
Um, I don't know. I don't know if it's solar or just traditional PG&E. Um, that was not necessarily, I mean, APD has traditional, you know, I mean, some, some, I guess there's a variety of each, right? Um, because Med River Hospital's on solar, but not necessarily.
I was thinking more along lines of voltage, like how much?
Oh.
Like, is it a construction or, um, not construction, but, uh, heavy, like a shop style or is it just like a homeowner?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. I did not, I, I didn't even think about that. I mean, she, she was talking about like big location, or, you know, she was talking about the obvious big locations, but then, you know, as we start thinking about, so, I mean, I can just, I, you know, we compile, if you want to email me some ideas and I can just send them to her as the consortia is, is developing, you know, these additional anchor institutes.
They're looking for a place in Blue Lake, like City Hall?
Well, well, they've already, so, so they've already got like the traditional places established, City Hall, the library, schools, you know, um, hospitals, those kinds of areas, the, the traditional locations. But in thinking out like, you know, would we need one at Prash Hall because it's so close to City Hall, right? It's within a mile radius. So is that necessary? Maybe, I don't know, right? But maybe the office is out at Green Diamond, right? Or at the tree farm at Green Diamond, you know, something like that is what I was thinking. Um, you know, I know they're, they're in conversations with the rancheria, so I'm not necessarily, I'm fairly certain that Connie's got, you know, the rancheria component figured out, but even like Glendale, right? Just some of those, some of those kinds of things. Yeah, anyway, it was, it was kind of a cool discussion and wow, underground cable is phenomenal. It's so cool. Yeah, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I did not attend any. There were none for me to attend where I was located. But I will be going to the League of Cities on March eighth in Willets. And I'm sad that our older woman, I wanted to look her up while I was there. She passed away.
Eighty-nine, like less than two weeks after her birthday.
Yeah.
Hundred and three-year-old.
Hundred sixteen.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
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 Oh, wow.
Oldest woman in the United States.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right there in Willets.
Hundred and sixteen years.
In Willets. I think she walked away for a minute. Came right back.
Make it to her hundred and sixteen.
Yes, two weeks after.
She did. There was a massive parade and balloons and it made national news. It was a huge, huge thing. Yeah, it was really cool.
And we should all report that we're supposed to be doing some kind of training online, right?
Yeah, I think I completed mine today. I think, I don't know. I'm going to ask you tomorrow if it went through. Okay, uh, we will move on then to managers' report. Uh, we have the sheriff contract negotiations, which we pretty much have discussed. Park Recreation, um, State Park Per Capita Grant, hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Ongoing, majority of the work has been completed. The floor looks good.
Yeah, it's all fixed. So we're going to have them come back and refinish the other sections.
Yay. Yay.
Even with all those little kids running all over.
Oh, squeaky tennis shoes. But skating is very hard on a floor.
I went to a basketball game there today. It was really fun and it looked good.
Uh, the Town Square Grant, um, Construction Problem Project will begin in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Contracting with Sequoia Industries to complete the work bike park. I see they got dirt all. Lot of dirt. Big hills all over the place there. So that looks like it's ongoing and will continue as weather permits.
Can I ask a question before we switch pages?
Yeah.
So you mentioned in your report about the Economic Development Commission that it was the bid for the bathroom for the Town Square was mentioned. Is there, is there a new, a new bid for a different kind of bathroom? No, so we're just talking about the old, the old, I forget what it's called, the old metal bathroom, Portland Louvre?
Okay, um, moving on. The library improvements, the library project is at ninety percent mark. Um, we have all the concrete work, final concrete work to meet ADA standards. Oh, the librarian wants the, um, the flower box moved back where it was.
Yeah, so we're waiting for our pass report and I think there's going to be a section of the concrete that's not going to meet, uh, their standards. So we're going to, we may need to pull a section out, um, to, to make the ADA standards, so.
So that can't be pushed against?
Oh, we can push it back, yeah.
Push it back. Okay, and then the city infrastructure, the truck route study, design and construction continues on the truck route. The city's projecting a June construction date for the improvements to Greenwood Avenue. As part of the first phase, the city will be replacing the water laterals. We've discussed that in the past.
Uh, has the, uh, the design review come back yet?
No.
Taylor Way improvements. The city has received a grant from HCOG to hire Dan Burden to complete a street design for Taylor Way. I'd like to see him when he comes. What does he do?
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure if he's going to come up here. We do all of our meetings via Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
It's up in, um, maybe the Seattle.
Yeah, I think he lives in that area. Okay. And the design will incorporate speed control measures, a gateway installation, raised crosswalks, on-street parking, turnaround options. Uh, the FEMA, FEMA water tanks funding, the city submitted a funding request to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program to replace the city's two redwood water tanks. The city's received notice. Phase one award has been approved. This will fund the design portion of the project. The city is in the process of working with FEMA and CalOES to finalize the funding agreement. It's ongoing. Our housing element update, staff has completed the final draft, submitted it to the state. The state has received the final submittal and directed the city to pursue adoption. The city planner is working on the environmental review and will be presenting the plan to the Planning Commission and the City Council for review and consideration of adoption. And then staff is working closely with our HCD representatives to address implementation of various initiatives. Having a compliant housing element allows the city to participate in a range of programs and funding opportunities. Should have a big celebration party when the state approves it. It's been so long. Are there any questions or comments from council on the manager's report? Is there anything from public on the manager's report? Julie, can then Kent?
Um, I was just, um, taking a little bit of like element. The report is done, I'm sorry. You guys are working all our nice little, I convert each day. Um, I wanted to ask your show, um, as just getting back to, um, for wanting to get more information out of speaker input. Like I think I want to hear more about them. And, um,
That's great.
Okay.
And back to, um, or, or, um, the roads, um, I mean, like other forms that are going on for that, um, I think that's important for instruction. Um, thank you.
Kent Sowatsky?
So I want to, uh, speak on item, uh, the FEMA water tanks funding. A request you have for there, and I was in communication. As, as some of you are aware, we've had people in the area coming to different properties. I have from a CalFire doing assessments for fire safe. And I mentioned to them, we, we want to make sure that your, your design work for your tanks does have the, the maximum protection, fire safe setbacks, it is a hundred foot of, uh, thing on that. So that most likely will be being addressed. And I think that's an important thing. If you're going to have infrastructure, is to protect it to your maximum ability. We don't want to lose our, uh, ability to have water storage because we didn't buy for correct, uh, fire safe things required by CalFire. Thank you.
Um, did staff want to add anything to the manager's report?
Um, I don't think so. If you don't have any questions.
Okay. Uh, we will then move on to future agenda, oh, the financial report. The financial report. Um, so this is the unaudited financial report of July one, twenty twenty-three to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The budget to date percentage is at fifty-eight percent as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Anything we need to know particularly about the financials?
Um, no, but I can report that our taxes came in. So, so that's very helpful. And then we, um, just got approval for a couple of, um, of our larger reimbursement requests from the state, um, that those have been approved and should be hitting the bank soon as well.
And the tax, is the tax, uh, payment reflected in these numbers?
I don't believe, no, they came in after. I don't, did, was Scott able to incorporate the, I don't believe it.
Yeah, this is to January thirty-first and they came in after that, so. That's, that'll be different. Do you anticipate any budget amendments that will be occurring?
Yeah, so we will have some budget amendments, um, mostly related to, um, the, the water project, the laterals.
The project on Greenwood?
Yeah, and then the construction for Greenwood, um, depending on when that comes forward. Uh, we may need a budget amendment to add that funding to the project, to the budget. Um, but yeah, I think Scott is starting to look at presenting an amendment maybe in March or so. He'd like to try and get the budgets, um, started sooner, but it's always, you know, that's always our goal. Um, and it seems like we always, we always get it adopted in time, but it's, um, and it's tax season, so Scott, his firm does a lot of taxes, so he gets pulled a lot off of our stuff for tax season, so. Um, but our goal is to, to get, um, the budget process started sooner than later.
So I'm, I'm looking at page one, which is the general fund and just noting the planning, uh, budget. And that we are, we've already spent eighty-seven percent of our budgeted amount for planning, so, um, and I'm, I don't see a, a line for engineering. So I'm curious, because SHN is mostly planning and engineering, right? So how does the engineering show in our budget?
So the planning budget, um, so we've had several projects that we have some outstanding reimbursements for. So, um, the planning budget is, um, we budget what we anticipate our expenses and revenues will be. Um, but as we bring in more projects, those come in through budget amendments. So even though, so although we have higher expenditures than planning, we also have higher reimbursements to, um, to, to balance those. Um, so those, we have reimbursements coming through planning for, um, some reimbursements through, uh, PG&E. Um, some work that PG&E has been doing, and then we have, um, reimbursements and cost recovery for the Danco project that's ongoing. And then we also have some, uh, projects, some grants. So as we bring in different projects through the budget year, uh, we can exceed those expenditures, but we also should be balancing that with exceedance of revenue. So, um, that'll be a budget amendment that Scott brings forward to amend that.
Okay. Do those, um, reimbursements get identified specifically for, for, um, planning or whatever?
Yes, because they're specific to specific scopes of work. So we'll pull those out. So if it's a construction project and there's aspects of it that are planning and engineering, those go to the planning engineering and then the construction goes to a construction, um, capital improvement, um, line item.
So, do I understand you correctly when you're saying, so all of the engineering is tied to specific projects, so it's not budgeted as engineering?
We have general engineering, so we have, we budget a certain amount for general planning and engineering. But through the course of the year, we bring in additional projects or different projects come to fruition at different times. Um, so like Greenwood, um, the, there's a construction aspect, an engineering aspect to the management of the construction project that comes in, um, separate. But we've also had, uh, grant revenue prior to that for preliminary engineering and design through a portion. So anything that's project related comes through on a project basis. And if it's going towards a capital improvement, then it also, it's, it comes in through a capital improvement fund. General planning and engineering where we just have an on-call planner, Gary's doing regular office hours the second and fourth Tuesday or Wednesday of the month. Um, or if he's doing meetings with the planning commission, that's budgeted separately. That's more like staff time. Same with engineering. Those budgets are usually fairly low, where the costs really come in is based upon projects. So there is our grant derivatives.
So should this planning line item, line, say, planning and engineering? So that should probably get changed then? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no questions or comments on this item, I'll open it up to public. Is there any public remarks? Kent Sawatsky?
In accounting, when you're, 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 um, looking at things, you look for strange numbers or things that, you know, are, are out of proportion, then we start doing why questions, uh, such as on your page one, you have a line item here that is, uh, actually your to-date best percentage of budget is, is four hundred and ninety thousand, fifty-four percent. Uh, and that basically is charges for services you budgeted nineteen-two oh six. And then you have, have, have actual to date ninety-four-two fourteen. So a relevant question for your staff would be a why question. Why, why is that one different than what was budgeted? So at least you'll know why. Maybe it's a one-time thing, maybe it's a recurring thing. Then on the other thing on page two, you have, uh, you have a, a cost of interest expenses, which is three hundred and forty-seven point four nine. You had budgeted, uh, one thousand eight hundred, you're spending six thousand two hundred and fifty-five. Just to guess, that might be the loan on your park property or something, because I did see a rather large disbursement on that one. So, so anytime you have, have variances in budgets, if you wanna look for it and ask why questions, because I assume you wanna know why things are, we're making way more money or we're making way less, we're spending more. So highly recommend you, you ask those questions at some time. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Julie? Julie? Okay, back to council for.
So can I ask, can I ask about that charges for services? That's almost five hundred percent of the budget?
Which item?
It is on page one, under revenues and transfers. Um, charges for services. It's about halfway down, under county revenues.
So these are cost recovery line items. So these are, um, as we, as projects come in, as, as we, um, they could be, um, permit fees, um, they could be cost recovery for projects, um, review. Um, so as projects come in throughout the year, those numbers change because we, we do a projected budget. Um, but we don't know what the year's gonna bring to us. And so, uh, so that's what would, um, would be in that category.
I mean, budgets, let's recall that budgets are just, uh, an estimate almost of what your, your expenses are going to be. And, uh, it's a, it's a blueprint. It's a way of you going forward, but it oftentimes is not the hard, fast reality of what happens.
It's a living document, like you're saying.
There you go.
Recovery, loss and payouts and, and stuff going back.
Right. And I would also point out that that's revenue. That's not expenditures, so.
And then on the next page, the interest expense that Kent pointed out at three hundred and forty-seven percent, is that, is that the, um, town square mortgage?
But I'm not sure what you're talking about. Under interest expense, we don't, the actual year to date is zero. The budget's eleven hundred. Is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm looking at interest expense under expenditures and transfers at sixty-two fifty-five with a budgeted amount of eighteen hundred. Um, so we're over by forty-four fifty-five. It's three hundred and forty-seven point four nine percent of the budget.
I don't know. I'd have to look and see which, which project that is. It could be, it could be loans, but I'm not sure. Um, it's just a general category, so I'd have to go and look. It could be, um, it could be multiple items.
Okay, um, there are no further questions or comments. This is not an action item. So we'll, we'll move on to future agenda items. We have the web designer. Some possible increase, not increase, um, continuation, yeah. Okay.
I would like to put that we, um, discuss the idea of allowing retail cannabis in the city of Blue Lake.
We have to amend our a lot of things because of cannabis laws that Blue Lake City have.
Yes.
It would be a change from our, um, cannabis law, which we
Just open a discussion item.
I would like to consider, uh, amending our Blue Lake City law to allow retail cannabis. I would like to put that on the agenda.
I was actually, that's one thing I'm thinking about bringing up.
And then I also wanna just actually discuss and have action on labeling the trash cans and recycling around town. I've had people ask about it. And then water in the dog park.
It was something temporary, because we talked about that, how it's really difficult to get water out there.
Wouldn't be that difficult. It's digging a ditch.
We have a It's that, it's that, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Dig a ditch. Get a ditch wedge. No, there's water right there at the little farm. It's not that far. Okay. Um, the signage that's on the emergency gate, maybe both of you know this answer, on Hatchery Road, the one that goes out towards Levy, um, the one that people park in front of all the time. Um, is, does that, is that city property or is that?
That's county responsibility.
It's county responsibility. Well, no, no, I'm talking about just the symbol, the sign itself, because, you know, there's, because there's a sign on the, you know, at the gate. And basically, I mean, I know it's an emergency gate. You're not supposed to block an emergency gate so that
Right, no parking.
Emergency vehicles can get out there, right? And the sign doesn't necessarily say that. It's a little bit vague. And so every time, you know, I'm out there walking and I, you know, furrow my eyebrows and stink eye who's ever, you know, whoever I think owns the car, right? But it doesn't necessarily say, it, it, and I'm just asking because the sign doesn't say, you know, no parking, emergency access only. Make it very clear. So if that's not the city, it's the county, then that's a whole other.
Yeah, and the fire chief, um, we both make the same rounds every morning. So that's one of our rounds that we go and I turn around at the hatchery and come back. And he routinely tags people's vehicles, um, for parking illegally in there.
I hope he tagged the woman who left her child in the car seat sleeping, which was I called, I did call that one in, that one.
That's illegal.
Well, parking there in general is illegal. But anyway, if it's not, if it's not a city issue, then it's, then it's not. So when you say tag, is that an actual, you gotta pay money kinda ticket?
No, but he gives a, a, basically a warning that, that his, the vehicle can't be towed.
Okay, any other future agenda items for our next meeting, regular meeting, which would be March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four at six-thirty?
I would like to add a moment of silence for Larry Kite.
Yes, please and thank you.
Yes.
Didn't know Larry.
He lives on the corner, across from the fire hall.
Thank you for remembering that. I was thinking about doing it tonight.
I, I, I thought about it after the opening statements. I was like, oh shit.
Yeah, we usually do it right after the flag split, so we can do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um,
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made by Angela Schultz, second by Elizabeth McKay. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council.
I, I believe it's a dead for a chat beginning, but on this meeting, I didn't see it on, but maybe that would be practice.
Do you remember? Is there something?
Um, oh, the, uh, the the incident thing.
Oh, right.
That wasn't put on the agenda.
And that brings up the, um, the, what do you call it? The incident was the, the whatever, I forget.
First Amendment auditor. It's called the First Amendment auditor incident, okay? First Amendment auditor. All right, well, we can discuss that at the next meeting.
The other thing we should probably, um, discuss briefly is, um, our agenda review committee meetings. We didn't have one this time.
I know, because it was President's Day.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't etch in stone that they had to happen on Monday. So I think that we need to come up with a way to communicate so that we have an opportunity to have one each month.
Yeah.
Um, so I wonder if, um, Annalee would be willing to be the person that, um, that sends out an email to the four people that are involved in that committee and then, you know, so maybe the week before you send out an email and say, hey, our meeting is here. Um, these are, you know, when are we gonna meet? And so we can set that meeting before it's a holiday and we all go, oh, it's a holiday and, um, agenda review committee. Yeah, yeah. So if you could do that, then it, um, then we'll have an opportunity to set that each month.
Okay, we had a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye? Aye. We're adjourned.